Are you reading both of the proclamations?
Did you want to read one?
No, I like to read a big word.
Oh.
Yeah, I know you do. Sometimes if you use like different colors, you know, like visors have different colors. If you use different colors.
Yeah, that's why I got them. Make the big, the big print. So when I get on this one, that I just hard to see that.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. Like I have jokes. Anyways, that's my tip of the day. Whether you wanted it or not.
I appreciate it.
Test, test.
Test, test.
I'll call our meeting to order. This regular city council meeting for February 4th, 2025. Please join me if you can to stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Thank you, Teresa. And Mr. Ross, can you please report on closed session?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council convened in open session at 5:00 PM and after determining that there were no public comments on the matters agendized for closed session, adjourned to closed session at 5:00 PM. In consideration of the first matter, only myself was present. That matter conclude during various portions of that time period. That concluded at 5:48 PM. The full council then addressed the remaining items on the closed session beginning at 5:49 and concluded at 6:32. With respect to reportable action, there will be a written report under the provisions of Government Code Section 54957.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions, council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross. Moving on to our proclamations, the first proclamation, item number three, will be for Black History Month. And do I have any recipients for the proclamation for the Black History Month? Orlando, can it go to the podium? I'll read the proclamation and then I'll give you opportunity to give any feedback and then we'll take a picture toward the end.
Okay.
So proclamation, City of American Canyon proclamation for recognizing February 2025 as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity to celebrate and to honor the vast historical and complimentary contributions of African Americans whose achievements have profoundly influenced and enriched, enriched the social, culture, and economic and political foundations of our nation. And whereas African Americans have been vital to the growth and the leadership of American Canyon, shaping its economic progress, cultural vibrancy, educational achievements, and social and political achievements through their enduring contributions. Whereas African Americans have made invaluable contributions to every aspect of American life, excelling in fields such as science, education, and arts, and politics, and sports, while leading pivotal efforts in the pursuit of justice, civil rights, and equality. And whereas Black History Month is a time to reflect on ongoing struggles for racial justice, to honor the achievements and legacies of trailblazers such as Dr. Martin Luther King, Rosie Parks, Harriet Truman, Frederick Douglass, Michael, Michael Malcolm X, and countless others, and to recommit ourselves to the ideals of equality and opportunity for all. And whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes the importance of Black History Month as an opportunity to acknowledge and honor past while also building a more inclusive future. And whereas this month, we encourage all residents to learn more about Black History, participate, participate in educational and cultural events, celebrate and achievements and contributions of Black Americans to our community and our nation. Now therefore, I resolve that I, Pierre Washington, Mayor of American Canyon, on behalf of American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in American Canyon and urge all citizens to join this observation by celebrating the achievements, honoring the legacy, and supporting the continued contributions of African Americans to our community and to our nation. Orlando?
First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pierre Washington, as well as Vice Mayor Mark Joseph, the council members, and to the members in attendance today. My name is Orlando Harris, and I'm actually a resident of American Canyon. I've been here for about 21 years. Raised three amazing kids in the American Canyon school system. My wife is also a middle school teacher here at the middle school. I was drafted by Brenda Knight to attend this evening, and I'm glad that she gave me this opportunity. I'm a child of the South, born and raised in the South. As a matter of fact, he mentioned one of my relatives' names when he said Rosa Parks. My grandmother and Rosa were first cousins. And so I thank the city, I thank the city for its willing, willingness to recognize the contributions of people of the African American community, those who have served the nation, those who have given their lives for this nation, those who have done things that are necessary to uphold the values of this nation even when the nation didn't do likewise. And so for the city to decide to make this proclamation says a lot about what the city means and what the city recognizes and how the city sees the importance of all of its citizens and their contributions. So I thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Orlando. Don't get too comfortable, Ken. I need to get back up there on top. We have a second proclamation this evening, and it's honoring our former colleague and city council member, Ken Leary, for his service and contributions to the community. So Ken, can you come back up for us?
Yay, Ken Leary!
Before I even read the proclamation, I just want to say publicly, thank you for all the support that you've given me over the years and, and showing me how to do council membership the right way and the community outreach the right way. So thank you.
You're welcome.
We didn't have the opportunity when Ken first retired from city council because of COVID. He was coming, going out as COVID as I was going in on COVID, and all I knew for the first two years how to do it on the television and on the computer. So this is the opportunity for us to just tell you how much we appreciate you and your service to the community. So reading, honoring Ken Leary for his service and contributions to the community. Whereas Ken Leary has demonstrated unwavering dedication to public service, beginning with his career as a community service director for the town of Yountville, and leaving a legacy of enhanced community engagement and enriched public programs. And whereas Ken Leary has been steadfast, a steadfast advocate for local governance serving on the local agency formation commission, LAFCO, of Napa County since 2017. Initially appointed as an alternate city member, Kenneth was elevated to a regular public member on April 5th, 2021, and has since served with dedication currently holding a term from 2022 to 2026. His commitment to LAFCO, the Cal LAFCO, public member role representing the coastal region reflects his passion for serving Napa County and borders the state of California with integrity and excellence. And whereas Ken Leary has exemplified the ideal of civic engagement and leadership through his service as two-term city council member for the City of American Canyon, concluding his tenure in November 17th, 2020. During his time on the city council, Kenneth served with distinction and numerous regional boards and commissions, including the American Canyon Local Governing Committees, the TIBID, Napa County Watershed Information Center, and the Conservation, which is called WIC, Napa County Climate Action Committee, and the Napa County LAFCO. And whereas Ken Leary contributions to the League of California Cities have earned him the statewide recognition, including the Torch Award for Advanced Leadership Level Two in 2017. An active participant in the, in the League's African American Caucus further exemplified his dedication to leadership and advocacy. And whereas Ken Leary's service to the community extended beyond public office through his active involvement in the Kiwanis Club of American Canyon, where he has served as the club president, board member, and Kiwanis advisor to the American Canyon High School Key Club, fostering youth leadership and community engagement. Additionally, Ken served as a community member on the Toro University of California Bio-Safety Committee for three years until his employment with the university. And whereas Ken is deeply committed to creating an inclusive and vibrant community by championing the involvement of nonprofit organizations, churches, schools, businesses, and residents of all age in achieving shared goals. His tireless efforts and dedication to Kiwanis International and the American Canyon High School Key Club highlights his unwavering sense of duty and service. And whereas Ken Leary's distinguished career and countless contribution to the City of American Canyon and Napa County have left an indelible mark on the community he so passionately serves, making it a safer, healthier, and more vibrant place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Mayor Pierre Washington, on behalf of the City of American Canyon, do hereby recognize and honor Ken Leary for his leadership, dedication, and extraordinary service to the community. We extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes to Ken as he continues to enrich the lives of other through public service and community engagement.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, city staff, public, the community. Yes, when I left here, it was in the middle of COVID. What I missed and mostly was not being able to say goodbye and to say, thank you for allowing me to serve you. When I was just a lad, these words were left in double in my mind. Ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. We have gotten so far away from that, but that has led me to do what I do because the community is only as good as its members. And if you want good governance, good community, you got to get active. You got to participate. And that's one of the good things about American Canyon. There are a lot of good participants here. And if it can't be done here, I don't believe it can be done anywhere. So thank you for allowing me to serve you those four years, eight years, actually, two terms, and continuing to serve you on the LAFCO for Napa Valley and on the state of California, Cal LAFCO. I don't know, I'll probably never stop serving because service is, we never pay our dues. We keep serving, we keep doing for the country, for our community, for each other. And I hope those sentiments, those thoughts, those beliefs can come back to this country. We've got to look at what we can do for each other except for what this country can do for us. So I thank you very much. I, I served with David, I served with Mark, Pierre, we didn't serve together, Leon and folks are gone. And it's, 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 the experience, it's, you can't, you can't really explain it because everybody on council is passionate and they're there to serve the community. And it's, 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 it's an experience of energy, of all, I don't know, problem solving, everything, and it's tough. But we do it as a team, as, as a group, as together, and looking out for the total community. And that's the big blessing of it all. And I appreciate you all for your service and your continued service. And you know I'll be here, especially when you need, I'll be here, attending council meetings and such. And, and thank Fran and, oh my God, I'm fogging out again. It's get old age. Why am I, Beth, I'm sorry, Beth. Yeah, I should, I should be. Well, I was reading something about old age and, and stuff and so, oh, no, 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 no. No, it says, you start forgetting your friends' names, right? So, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. So thank you all. I appreciate, and we'll see each other at the Kiwanis Crab Feed. Aren't there tickets available?
Yes, there are still tickets available.
Mm-hmm. All right. Well, thank you very much.
And we, we thank you as well, Ken. We can take a picture.
I say with gratitude, hey you.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
Pardon me, Mayor. We have one more presentation first.
Oh, we do, we do, we do. I do have that.
Thank you.
Item five, the American Canyon State Route 29 Corridor Improvement Project. Sorry about that, Kate.
We can go home and drive in this nice weather if you'd rather not listen to us. Well, first of all, we're really happy to be here again. And, you know, the project is, oh, he's, yeah, sure. He's, I'm not going to be doing that. It's okay. So anyway, I'm Kate Miller. I'm the executive director of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and I'm just going to kick off today's presentation. I'd like to introduce the team from NVTA. So Danielle Schmitz is our deputy executive director, Grant Bailey, our manager of engineering. And then we have two members of our consulting team from Kim Lee Horn, Parag Metta, who is the project manager, and Sean Howk, who is a roundabout expert. I also want to provide you just a brief summary of where we are on the project and the work that we have left to do to set the right expectations. The project initiation document, or what we call a PID, was completed with input from American Canyon City Council, staff, the community, and it was approved by Caltrans. And the PID resulted in two alternatives, which will be discussed in detail later this evening. But one of the key purposes of the PID is to pare down the project to a reasonable number of alternatives to both set a clear path forward and to narrow the scope of the environmental document. Studying multiple alternatives in the environmental phase is both costly and very time consuming. And we've already talked about this project for probably, what, 13, 14 years now? So we want to kind of get going on it. I know you all do too. So NVTA currently has sufficient funds to complete the pre-construction phases of the project. And as you know, the voters overwhelmingly supported Measure U, and some of the funding for construction is likely to come from that program, which will help accelerate the project and bring federal and state funds to fund the project. The pre-construction cost is about $15 million to $20 million, and the construction cost is estimated to be $55 million. And that does not include the right-of-way, which is projected to be pretty extensive. These costs will be refined as the environmental and design phases, phases progress. And I just want to emphasize that the project is really important to NVTA, to the board, to staff, and identifying the funding to deliver the project will remain a very high priority. And with that, I'll pass the mic to Grant, who will provide an introduction to the work we're currently doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. One moment while I open with the presentation here, but my name is Grant Bailey. I'm the engineering manager with NVTA, as mentioned, and project manager for this project. So, which is the American Canyon State Route 29 Corridor Improvement Project. So just a quick overview of our agenda. I'll give a project history and why we're here tonight, and then I'll hand it off to Parag Metta, who are consultant with Kim Lee Horn, who will talk about project alternatives. And then Sean Howk, also with Kim Lee Horn, will talk about the roundabouts, which are one of the alternatives under consideration to move forward with this project. And then we'll open it up for questions and answers from the council and public.
Good, excuse me, I just want to make sure that you're talking loudly, like more into the mic.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully that's better. All right. So just to open it up, we'll talk about some of the existing conditions that are out on the corridor today. And the corridor we're speaking of is on SR 29 between, SR 29 between Napa Junction Road at the north and American Canyon Road at the south. Currently, there are lack of multimodal connectivity for bikes and pedestrians. There are some facilities, but they don't connect well, and they also, with the speeds they're out there now, not conducive to, to all modes. Public transit facilities through the, through the corridor are lacking. We do, NVTA does run transit through the corridor, but we don't make any stops currently on 29. In fact, we route around the corridor to provide local service to American Canyon. There are traffic, there's traffic congestion during peak periods, both in the AM and PM, and customer access to American Canyon's Main Street and Commercial Business District is hindered. The overhead utility poles and wires currently along the corridor lead to poor aesthetics as well as, you know, general poor aesthetics from landscaping that exist currently. And there's also high collision rates between both vehicle-to-vehicle and vehicle and pedestrian and bicycle modes. Some of our goals in delivering this project include improving corridor operations for all modes, improving access along the corridor, travel times, and reliability through the corridor. We also look to improve safety by implementing Vision Zero Safe System approaches, improving, improving public transit access along the corridor, travel time and reliability, and then supporting growth in American Canyon's priority development area. While this project is a regional benefit project, it's happening in American Canyon, and so we're looking to support both the region and local facilities and community by implementing this project. And also, we'd like to improve aesthetics by removing existing above-ground utilities and improving landscaping and just generally beautifying the corridor. The main goals of this presentation is to inform the council about the project, but we're also kicking off the public engagement phase through this project, and we look to hold our first community meeting in late March or early April. And so we'd like to get feedback on the council on how you feel we can best engage the community as well as put, provide the best information to the community. And now just for a brief project history before I hand it off to Parag. So in 2014, NVTA finalized our State Route 29 Gateway Corridor Improvement Plan, which analyzed the corridor between Amola Avenue and Southern Napa County Line for travel times and, and assessed how we could improve current, the current facility at intersections and for various modes. In 2019, California began implementing or initiated the Climate Action Plan for Transportation Infrastructure, CAPTI, which started shifting California's transportation goals and infrastructure implementation plan to be more environmentally friendly. And NVTA, reading the writing on the wall, excuse me, let me back up. CAPTI also required implementation of a comprehensive multimodal corridor plan for state highway systems that we're looking to obtain state funding through SB1 or the gas tax. funding through SB 1 or the gas tax, and so, NVTA, kind of seeing that coming, initiated our comprehensive multimodal corridor plan for SR 29 and completed that study in 2020, which built upon the existing 2014 Gateway Corridor Improvement Plan. So, what you see, the plans there in yellow were regional and statewide plans, and then as we moved into the green studies or phases, that's project-specific to the SR 29 corridor. In 2023, NVTA completed the SR 29 Project Study Report, Project Development Support Phase, or the PID Phase, Project Initiation Document, where we analyzed a number of alternatives to improve corridor operations and selected three alternatives to move forward for further study. Those alternatives were the no-build study, signalization improvements along the corridor, and then also replacing existing signalized infrastructure with roundabouts. In 2024, NVTA initiated the Project Approval and Environmental Document Phase, or PA-NED, which is the phase we're currently in now, will be evaluating the three build alternatives, and with the goal of selecting an alternative, clearing that alternative environmentally or receiving environmental clearance at the state and federal level, and then also receiving Caltrans approval to move forward with that alternative, because this is a state highway facility that will be owned and maintained even after the project is developed and completed. Note on stakeholders, NVTA is the lead environmental agency at the state level, so we'll be clearing the environmental document through SEQA, and we're also delivering the project. Caltrans is the lead NEPA agency or Federal Environmental Clearance Agency, so they'll be clearing the environmental document through NEPA. They are also the facility owner, and so we're coordinating with them closely to ensure we're in alignment with their goals, and then also the city and community of American Canyon. As I mentioned, this is a regional benefit project that's happening in American Canyon, so we want to ensure that we're implementing a project that is consistent with the community's goals and ensuring that, you know, everybody is happy with what we're doing. With that, I'll hand it over to Prag to speak about project alternatives.
Thank you, Grant. Prag Mehta with Kimley Horn, we're the Project Manager, Engineer for this improvement project. Could you spend a little time on talking about the Caltrans project development process? What you've heard so far is the PID, the Project Initiation Phase, PSRPDS, where we have two build alternatives along with no-build that were carried forward to this current phase, which is the Project Approval Environmental Document Phase, where, you know, we're going to go through the project preliminary design and clear the project, I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. So, we are in that, this current phase, from this particular point, once the alternative is selected, the next phase is the design phase where we prepare the construction documents, and then it goes to the construction, and somewhere between the end of design phase, beginning of construction phase, there could be a right-of-way, you heard, the project could have some right-of-way utility impacts, so it could be an independent phase, it could be part of the construction phase. So, that's where we are right now, and just wanted to kind of share what's involved in the PAED phase, is primarily we look at the, the traffic, which is looking at, you know, traffic mobility for all modes, for both the regional and local circulation, look at for vehicular traffic, transit, and of course, for bicycle pedestrian facility as well. And then, developing the preliminary engineering, developing the project footprint, doing the right-of-way, that kind of carried forwards to the environmental footprint, and we cleared the project with state and federal, SEQA and NEPA guideline, we anticipate doing initial study, negative declaration for under SEQA guidelines, and categorical exemption for a project of this type under, under federal guidelines. Key component, what you heard earlier, what Grant mentioned, is the outreach, talking and going and sharing the information, seeking input from community, and we're planning the first public outreach workshop tentatively later in March, early April timeframe. So, just to, you know, summarize on the PAED, we will clear the project environmentally to get ready for the design phase, we'll obtain the environmental clearance, select an alternative, and the key component also is obtaining Caltrans approval, it's a state right-of-way, SR 29, we want Caltrans approval as we move forward into the design and construction, and again, we want to do this through the community buy-in. So, just to share, I mean, you're very familiar with the, sure, we're familiar with the SR 29 corridor, our project limits are about mile and a half from American Canyon to Napa Junction Road, there are existing five signalized intersection, series of driveways, overhead utilities, and, you know, you're probably familiar with the congestion in this corridor, recurring congestion through the, through this corridor. So, the previous phase, looked at it, developed alternatives, I'll go through that, share you the two alternatives that we have. Before going into that, I just wanted to share some of the common features for both the alternatives, which addresses some of the issues what Grant highlighted earlier. So, you know, recurring congestion that we wanted to address through improving the mobility for all modes, improving transit operations, looking at moving the bus stops to the 29, and, you know, providing for that better connectivity between all modes again, undergrounding the utility, maybe even at, looking at some of the, you know, landscaping elements and making this more friendlier corridor for this, this is a regional facility, but it's more of a local use on, on SR 29 in this corridor as well. Part of our work would be looking at each of the intersection and doing the intersection control evaluation to figure out the, the type of control that we want, whether it's a signalized, whether it's a roundabout, and that's the main, the two alternatives that we are currently looking at. In addition, we will be looking at series of these driveways that we have on the corridor and looking for the opportunity to even consolidate them and see how we can streamline and improve the operations. So, the alternative one is similar to what you have right now, is a signalized alternative, we're looking at maybe, you know, the, the five intersection, existing intersection, and there were potential two new traffic signals were looked at in the PSRPDS, which we'll be evaluating part of our work. Currently, the signals have transit signal priority, and, you know, we're looking at enhancing that with the common features that I mentioned earlier, and maybe even looking at providing for a transit bypass or, or, you know, somehow better, better improve the transit operations through this corridor. Alternative two is through the intersection control evaluation, we will evaluate the, you know, application for roundabouts, potentially five roundabouts, which will be very unique to the corridor of this, this type. The previous study looked at it more preliminary, we are going to go more into the traffic operation analysis, go more in detail to see the viability of roundabout, roundabout intersection at each of this, each of these five intersections. The preliminary work that, that we have looks at, it's potentially could have three-lane roundabouts, which is even more different than anywhere else, we have two-lane roundabouts in the, in this community, and people are used to it, so it's the, leads to a little bit more complexity in design, more in making sure that the community and there's a buy-in, and we of course get the Caltrans's approval as well on the, on the corridor. Just to give you a little overview on the project milestone, we are in the PAED phase, anticipation, completion in 2026, and then of course, the PSNE construction document, and those phases are dependent on the, you know, availability of the funding. As I mentioned, the roundabout being a critical element of the project, we have Sean Huck, who's our National Roundabout Expert, who is here, and he's going to walk you through some of the planning and design elements we'll be looking in, you know, for this corridor and designing this roundabouts.
Thank you, Prag. Just going to do just a general overall introduction of, of roundabouts and why it is that they're being considered and what some of those benefits may be. First, just the basics of a roundabout, it's a yield control entry, yield control intersection, it's one reason why they're efficient, because you don't have to stop unless there's a conflicting vehicle there. You circulate around the roundabout in a counterclockwise direction, and you only need to yield to traffic on your left, so it's a simplified decision-making process as you go through. We use, unlike signals and traditional intersections, we use actual hard geometry in terms of curbs, gutter, other things to control traffic and control speeds, there isn't a reliance on light through traffic signals or something else that you need to assume your, your neighbor driving down the street will obey a signal. Why they work, significantly, the safety is a primary component, there is efficiency in terms of operations compared to a traffic signal system, but you get the efficiency also, you also get the safety component, there's a significant reduction in terms of serious energy or high-energy collisions, we take away the, the head-on collisions, they don't occur at roundabouts, and on, also for left turns, we take away those, this like T-bone type of collisions, or something that are really common at a left turn. So, those are the types of collisions that lead to serious injuries and fatalities at normal intersections, and that's one reason why we're looking at these. I have a, I have here a few examples of projects that we've done across the country in similar corridors. The first one on the top left is in downtown Sarasota, Florida, this is a roundabout corridor in high-density area, lots of pedestrian traffic on a, on the actual state highway system, and there's a mix of triple and double-lane roundabouts. To the right is another project that we worked on, this is in Dina, Wisconsin, this is part of the I-41 corridor project that goes from, that runs from Green Bay south, and there's a, several large, large-scale roundabouts in different types of land uses, this one, this picture is at a commercial center, shopping center. On the bottom left is another project we looked at in Loveland, Colorado, Loveland, Colorado has a roundabout first policy, and this is a similar type of use corridor with commercial, mixed commercial and residential. And then, of course, we have to throw in a picture of Carmel, Indiana, which is kind of the, I think there's five, it's a, it's a community of over 100,000 people, and I think there's five signals left, and there's plans to replace four of them, the, the last one that's going to remain is actually a historical signal, because it was the first signal that was actuated in the country, so, that's downtown. So, all of these are examples of similar land uses and similar corridors where roundabouts are effectively, then this isn't a, a new idea or something that we want to be experimental with in this community. How are we going to make the decision? Prag mentioned looking at a, something that we call an intersection control evaluation or ICE, and what we do is we look at the, the, the operations, the efficiency of each of the signal alternative and the roundabout alternative, and we monetize something like delay, how fast, how long are you going to sit at the intersection and wait, and so we can monetize that using statewide figures in terms of vehicle occupancy and the, the time value of money for somebody sitting in traffic. Another component that we look at is safety, so we use a predictive method to predict the number of collisions or the, the life cycle typically 20 years, full range from minor fender benders to fatalities, and we, we, you know, we're engineers, and unfortunately we have to assign a dollar value to each of those to make that assessment, but that's something that we're able to do to inform the decision-making process. Another component of the benefits that we're going to look at is emissions, so we're able to monetize emissions, and so, there's a, there's a curve in terms of vehicle speed and how much you sit there at hard acceleration and those types of things, so that will get factored in. And then we balance that with some of the costs in terms of long-term maintenance, for, you know, signals are quite expensive, you look at pavement maintenance as well in terms of square footage of maintenance areas, and then also the pure construction cost to do that project, and so that creates this benefit-cost analysis, and it helps to inform the decision-makers, such as yourselves, what the best investment is long-term for the facility. Another component of this is because we want to join the community, both sides of the community, not have the highway be a divide. With any large-scale facility, there's, there's always this, how are we going to cross, cross the street, right? So, at roundabouts, we have four crease, four crossing treatments that we look at that are available to us for multi-lanes, these are all projects that we've worked on in different parts of the country. The first one on the left is just, is a raised crosswalk, that helps slow vehicles down, but it also provides better sightlines, better to, to vehicles observing pedestrians. Another option is RFBs or the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons, kind of the strobes that you see at crossings, and so I'm kind of continuing down a, a more constrained path, and so then the next one, which is in Sarasota, Florida, is a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and so that's a, a signal, it's a form of a signalized intersection crossing, but it's dark unless there's a pedestrian there. And then the final one is downtown Miami, where we, we put in a full signalized crossing, so it's actuated with pedestrians, by pedestrians. So, we're going to look at a whole host, you know, full range of these, look, because each affects operations, and we want to try and find that right balance for the community, but then also for operations. Now, I'm just going to close out here with a couple local examples, I mean, there's, roundabouts are becoming extremely popular, there's several in, in Napa County, and, you know, the North Bay and Sacramento area, and all over California and all over the west, really, this is, this is the newly constructed one just north of here, and then, this is a, this is here in your community, at Rolling Hills Drive in Rio Del Mar, this, this illustrates kind of that, that effect that it can have on the aesthetics of a community as well, to provide some, some different landscape opportunities and kind of take it away from this urban street environment to maybe something a little softer. I think with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Grant.
Thanks, Sean. That concludes our presentation, we have to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Kate Miller and the NVTA team for the presentation, high-level presentation, so I'll leave it to our council for questions, Councilmember Oral.
Yeah, thank you, can I speak to the, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, the gentleman from the roundabout presentation?
Sean.
Sean, Sean, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you talk to us about the highest volume around, in terms of traffic capacity and volume that, that you've seen work or had limitations to?
Yeah, so, so I've seen roundabout capacities get up, upwards north of 60,000 ADT, which I think is quite a bit higher than what this corridor would be.
ADT is the term for?
Average, average daily traffic.
Okay.
So, 60,000 vehicles going through one intersection in a day.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think we're depending, depending on who you talk to, 48,000 or 50,000 a day, and so, you wouldn't be here unless you thought it was doable, I suppose, right? That, that was a big question that this community had, like, so much traffic, how does a roundabout work?
Understandable, and it's, and that's why I wanted, and that's why I wanted to share those, those pictures of similar corridors with similar traffic volumes in other places in the country, where, have actually the higher, higher traffic volumes through those corridors, and not everybody can go up to, to Green Bay, Wisconsin or something, but there's several roundabouts up there, triple-lane roundabouts in a series in a row, and I, I think it's a, I think it's a good, good example, if, if we just add one more lane to the roundabout, and you think about how you use the, the single-lane roundabout that I showed that's in your community now, and then you go up to the highway, up the highway, and those are multi-lane roundabouts, well, that doubled the capacity of that, and I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's a huge jump in terms of comfort in terms of navigating, because again, we simplify the decision-making process.
Okay.
Through there.
Can, can you talk to us a little bit about traffic mitigation and how that might help it flow? We have a northbound AM commute that is heavy between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, southbound, 3:00 to 5:00, 5:30 or so, how to, in your view, how, and in your experience, how have roundabouts performed?
Yeah, there's, there's several different ways that we can go, go through there, and that's, that's really kind of the crux of what we're looking at now in terms of operations and seeing how, because our goal is to make these as small as possible, we want as few lanes as possible, that's really what we want to do, so, there's ways to, you know, the, there's going to be signals on So there's ways to, you know, the, there's going to be signals on the corridor whether we do roundabouts, you know, even outside the roundabout portion of it that are going to meter flow. There's certain, there's certain components that we can do to find that right balance to meter flow. Maybe there's options to control the number of vehicles entering the system within American Canyon to reduce lanes. And we just need to find that right balance. And that's something that we're going to look at through our traffic analysis. I don't, Prague, I don't know if you want to say anything else on that, but.
Sure, I can, I can add to that. So part of the, where we are right now, we're just going to evaluate both the alternatives with the traffic operations and we'll be comparing that with no build. There's a opening year traffic analysis, there's a design year traffic analysis. The corridor would look for opportunity to figure out, how do you maximize the, you know, operation throughput? And then you, of course, will have, American Canyon, for example, would probably stay signalized just because of the volume, maybe because of the first signal from, you know, from 2937. So there are a number of, you know, methods and steps that we are still to take. Right now, we have these options and the alternatives that can move forward in the preliminary design phase.
Thank you. I'm glad you transitioned because my next question's for you. Talk to me about the reasons why we're not evaluating the section of American Canyon Road and Highway 29. And I know there's a railroad track there, but I'm sure you've dealt with those before on roundabouts. Why isn't that being evaluated? Because in my view, in my mind, that were, that's where, if I can get through town quickly going southbound, I'm still going to hit a light at American Canyon Road. And that just has a domino effect all the way up. So I just want to understand that. Actually, I want to have the public hear that from you guys, too.
Sure. Yeah, I think that is part of the history as well.
It's a little bit of the history. So there is some physical constraints, the power plant that's there, as well as the railroad, which would make it an extremely expensive intersection to build. But the traffic really tapers off at that intersection. Most of the traffic is actually further north. And so when we looked at it, it just really wasn't a justifiable improvement.
Is it, are we going to look at it? I mean, isn't that what a study is for? Can we not look at that?
Well, we're going to, we're going to include, you know, looking at how we can make traffic move by extending turn pockets and things like that at that intersection. But it was looked at a lot during the PID already.
And is that, is that, is that, the PID, we can look at that now and find the findings from how we came to that conclusion? Is that available for us?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly continue to evaluate that and come back to this group with additional traffic analysis on it. But it's just not an improvement that is being considered right now. But we will, again, I think we could look at the traffic and see.
Well, I mean, so that's, that's my question. So I think staff has looked at it, I don't think the public has looked at it. This council hasn't, maybe has been presented on it, but I don't think I've had a satisfactory answer of why that is. I understand the main concepts behind it, a railroad, a power plant, all of that stuff is there. But as we do these studies, I don't want to miss the opportunity to at least consider a roundabout there. The reality is, I'm with Carmel, Indiana. I want roundabouts in every corner.
I hear you. We can come back with some technical analysis on, you know, what is the best treatment for that, for that intersection.
So when you do the technical analysis, and then I think we're going, are we in an environmental review now? Are we too late for the process?
No, I mean.
To consider that and submit that to Caltrans?
We looked at it a lot in the PID and we can bring that back to you. But is it too late to actually do a specific change in each intersection? I think it's too late to do some out, you know, we looked at in the PID various intersections and we did not specify exactly which intersections or the number. It's somewhere between four and six. That intersection was not part of that, but we can certainly bring back to you the analysis that we prepared in the PID and we can talk about it further.
Yeah, thank you. I would appreciate that. I can't speak for my whole council, but I'm sure they would appreciate that. We would, as we do these studies, as we've been doing these studies since 2013, when I was on that SR 29 committee, all the way through my time on council, at least let's be thorough about it and not dismiss anything, particularly when we're being presented with a new idea that has come down from NVTA and others that the community, quite frankly, was, has taken a long time to accept that this was coming and understanding it. Not saying that it's bad or right in either way, but it wasn't a decision that anybody in the community talked about.
Well, I, I wouldn't characterize it that way at all. We actually had a couple of public meetings and.
Had the public meetings, but I'm saying there was a plan for this expansion along the way. And then the fact that even we had those, we're also already dismissing an option that is happening and that we need to be educated about. Alls I'm doing is making a request for thoroughness.
We can certainly bring back that information, absolutely.
Thank you, councilmember Oro. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'd like to make a couple of disclaimers, a good one and a bad one, maybe. The good disclaimer is it sounds like on the environmental review, a categorical exemption or an initial study, NEGDEC, in the environmental world is on the low end of the scale. It's not like a full environmental impact report where we get sued and all that. So that's a good thing from my perspective. The second one is that what's being, when we talk about potentially adding two more traffic signals or six roundabouts, I think it's important to emphasize that's kind of the maximum. You know, it's like you got to have the, you know, a big pot and what will end up being recommended will probably be much less. For example, I'm inclined to think we probably could get by with less roundabouts and certainly less signals, you know, and obviously time will tell. So I just wanted to throw it out there that we're not, well, we may examine additional traffic signals, but I'm pretty sure it won't go well if you actually recommend that. Now to my real questions. I read that roundabouts work best when all four lanes have comparable traffic demands. I don't know if that's true or not. But if that were true, then my concern is the north-south in American Canyon is heavy and the east-west is less.
Yeah, I would just add, that was really a Caltrans thing and they've let that go. They also used to have, had to be, you know, at least four access points. And now we're looking at multiple roundabouts in Valley with just three access points. And Caltrans has really changed their colors on that. So was there anything scientific behind those things? We don't know. I mean, I can't answer that.
So that, again, I think the roundabouts will be beneficial. I still am a little concerned about a four-lane roundabout just because that's more challenging than, than a two-lane, but.
I don't think we're suggesting four lanes.
Well, my idea is two in both directions.
Yeah, turn lanes off of it. It may, it may, from a distance, look like four lanes, but it's really, you know, kind of a typical intersection.
Yeah, two lanes in both directions. So I'm calling that four lanes, but okay. So now getting into specifics. I appreciate councilmember Oro's interest in learning more about just how we came to the conclusion that conceivably a power substation and a railroad track and an existing shopping center might be a constraint. I'm willing to accept the argument that that's going to be a signal, but I would certainly say it'd be nice if we had some dialogue about what things we could do to improve that, the extended left turn lanes, for sure.
So we're not done, we're not even there yet. We want to make sure that whatever our constraints are, that we're doing the most we can for each intersection in terms of operability within those constraints.
Good. Because I do think that intersection can have some creative things. One area that I've advocated, and I'll do it again, a free right turn if you're going westbound on American Canyon and going to turn right to get onto 29 North. If there's a way that that could become a free right, taking advantage of some of the right-of-way that is kind of a remnant parcel anyway, that might help improve the flow. And extending left turn pockets would be great. And then the last thing, and I think we've beat the horse enough, but I'm going to do it again. Rio Del Mar, even though it's a three-way intersection, it is, you know, soon will be a four-way intersection. So if you can design it from that perspective, that will save us a little bit of grief. But other than that, I think it's a great report. To the question, how do we improve civic engagement? Obviously more meetings, but that, that has a cost to it. So somehow, if there's some way that we can have more material or have, you know, I'm thinking of train the trainers, people who could meet with our community groups and other organizations that are relatively familiar with it won't be able to answer really tough technical questions, but something like that.
Well, a couple things there. You know that we have enhanced our outreach team quite a bit at NVTA. And Kim Lee Horn has a very good outreach team as well. So I think we are, we're way ahead of where we have been in the past on team members. Also, we have the utility of Zoom, which we didn't have when we were working on the PID. You might remember one meeting, and I think you and Mayor Garcia were the only people that were there. But, so I think we have a lot more opportunity to have expanded meetings and just, you know, make sure that we can involve the larger community through technology as well.
Fair enough. Last thing, there's been some people running around saying that the problem with a roundabout is we have big trucks going through town and they won't be able to use the roundabout. Is it possible?
Do you want to answer that question? Because we've answered it so many times.
As Caltrans, yeah, I'm assuming Caltrans does trucks and highways and that they have configurations that are designed for that.
So our buses are actually harder to get through an intersection than a truck is because a truck is articulated, but in buses, our buses are not. But, you know, all the roundabouts are also designed to be moundable. And you'll see people, even cars, driving over the edge of the roundabout and better than hitting another car on the other side of them. So that is the, you know, one of the purposes of designing it that way. And I don't know if you have anything else to add.
So we're involved with working on a lot of light industrial, industrial areas and actually in one of the largest inland ports in the country right now. And that facility is, I mean, 50 or 49 million square feet of warehouse space, all roundabouts. For trucks, so all roundabouts. And so there's significant benefits in terms of truck usage and, that we talk to wear and tear on the trucks, you know, the hard, the hard acceleration and the braking and everything. It's a lot easier. So we do design them specifically for those types of vehicles.
Perfect.
And we have a truck roundabout in American Canyon.
We do.
Yeah.
Great Island.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Lamatina.
Good evening, thank you for the presentation. I'm always thinking of safety. And say we had a fire in American Canyon, what's better, roundabouts or signals to get everyone out?
I'll tell you one thing, signals require power, roundabouts don't. So that, that, that type of confusion goes away. Who has right-of-way? We know who has right-of-way. Just like any sort of intersection where you may need some sort of traffic control or something to have reverse flows or some sort of evacuation plan that may be included. In general, you need fewer people for that traffic control at a roundabout than you would a signal because there's fewer access points.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No questions, but Kate, thank you and your team for coming out and assisting us. As you guys know, the 29 is very critical for us and it's a big headache. So thank you for you and your team for coming out here and trying to help us. You know, obviously we're growing, so we definitely, definitely appreciate the assistance. And thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, well, you're quite welcome. I mean, I think I just need to reemphasize that this is a project that's important to everybody in Napa Valley and that your staff have been really instrumental in working with us on moving this project along. So thanks to Jason and Erica for their efforts as well, so. And we look forward to, you know, meeting with you over the next couple of years on this. I think we'll be meeting a lot. So thanks.
Thanks, Kate, and your team, thank you.
Also, with that item closed, we'll move on. There is not public comment on this, is it? It's just a presentation, it was just a presentation, yeah. So at this time, I'd like to move to public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening.
I, I have a couple of speaker cards. The first one is Arvin Nishal. You're up for public comment.
Hi, good evening, mayor. Councilmembers and friends. My name is Arvin Nishal, I live in American Canyon. And I'm came to announce that our annual festival is coming in April. April the 6th in Shandover Park is a holy festival. We're doing this festival for the last 14, 14 years. And everybody loved this event, it's a color festival. So we want to invite you on that day, on the 6th of April, from 2:00 to 5:00. So we have a dress code, white. Because if we're white, you will have a different color on your shirts. So it's a very good event and children love it. Everybody loves it, this event. And it's also famous in many counties in Bay Area, they celebrate at that time. So I'm doing this one to bring the community together because American Canyon is a very diverse community. So that's why I'm doing this one, it's a wonderful. And I invite to everybody to come over there. Fran is supporting me all the time, thank you, Mark Joseph also. So on the 6th of April in Shandover Park from 2:00 to 5:00. Thank you very much, thanks a lot for coming, thank you. I have some flyers over here, if you want the flyer, you can take it, thank you.
Okay, I have Ernie Nodel. Oh, thank you. I have no other speaker cards and no hands are raised online.
Okay, if there's no other public comments, I'd like to close public comment and return to the council for any recommended agenda changes.
No, no agenda changes. And if there are no other objections, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second. We have a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Just one moment, I just need my system to catch up. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Joseph and second.
From councilmember Cruz.
Okay, councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Okay, next is public hearing, item number 12, establishing electric vehicle fees. Mr. Holly?
Thank you, mayor. Our interim assistant city manager, Juan Gumas, will handle this item, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers of the public. Tonight with this item, we are asking council to adopt a resolution to set new EV charging rates. A little bit of history, back in 2016, we installed our first dual charger at the, at the park and ride, the city's park and ride, which is the library. Since then, we've worked diligently and gotten some grants and we've installed, we've installed five additional dual ports. Ever since we installed that first port, we've been absorbing the cost of the electricity, the maintenance, the software cost and so forth. So what we're asking tonight is essentially to adopt rates for those charge, those chargers, for the use of those chargers, to recoup some of the costs. And what we're asking for here is to be net neutral. So not to make a profit, not to be net, net revenue neutral and cost neutral. What we've done is we've, we've looked at our costs, we've looked at our software costs. And what we've determined is that 47 cents per kilowatt is what is needed. is what is needed to be net neutral. Now, what we didn't include was any additional costs. What I mean by additional costs, any additional cost to the user for set-aside money, for replacement, for when these chargers go bad and they need replacement, they need maintenance, they need additional work, we haven't included that. So one of the reasons is we wanted to remain competitive. We've looked at surrounding jurisdictions, we looked at other areas, private charging stations, and we feel that 47 cents per kilowatt is competitive. It's also a way for us to recoup and not subsidize the use of these chargers. Over the last couple of years, over the last four years, our PG&E rates have increased 33%, just like the majority of other residents. We're not immune to that. We also experience increases. And since these chargers have come online, we've used them, they've been in use a lot more. So when we started with that first lone charger at the library, we now have five dual-port chargers, which is 10 chargers, and they're getting a lot substantial use. Hence, we're subsidizing that cost. So for tonight, we're asking that the council adopt that resolution and set the rate at 47 cents per kilowatt. Also included in there is an idle fee charge. What we've noticed with some of these chargers is that folks charge, and they leave their car there for a couple of hours, hence not given the opportunity for another vehicle to come in and charge. What we want to do is remain flexible, and our flexibility is this. We're looking to provide those folks that charge and are done a 30-minute grace period. Once you're done charging, everything is on your cellphone now, so they get an alert. The cars are very smart. When they're done charging, they'll get an alert, you got 30 minutes to come pick up your car. If you don't, we're proposing, we are proposing a charge for that in the amount of $2.50 per 15 minutes. So if they stay there one hour, they're going to be charged $10. That's an incentive for them to get going and free up those charges for anybody else that has those electric vehicles. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Yeah, thank you for that, Juan. I actually don't have any objections to the fee, nor do I have an objection to the $2.50 fee, because that actually makes the owner police themselves. And I think that's what we need to do. But a couple of quick questions for you. Out of all the chargers, are any of them the superchargers that we're investing in?
No, they're not the superchargers. They're what's called the Level 2 chargers. They're not the superchargers. For that, we would need a greater infrastructure in order to put those.
Okay, so it was an infrastructure issue with that piece?
Correct.
All right. That's all I have for questions. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, so love everything about the proposal and what staff has presented. Although I have due one reservation, I want to talk to you, we're at a break-even now with the cost, but there's nothing built in for maintenance over time. And you know there's maintenance over time. How do we address that?
So the 47 cents per kilowatt addresses the operational break-even. The additional idle rate, the surcharges, that doesn't cover any operational expenses. So as we collect those penalties, those fees, we're going to set those aside and continue to evaluate. They may not be enough because the $2.50 after 30 minutes may be incentive enough for folks to move. But as we continue to collect those fees, we'll set those aside for replacement. We also were recently awarded another grant to install an additional 3, 2-port system. So essentially, these systems, these chargers aren't costing us anything upfront, but we should be prudent enough to set some money aside. We're not setting aside, right now, operationally, the only additional set-aside funds that we would collect would be those idle charges. One other caveat, without getting too into the weeds, is that the rate will be charged to the two solar chargers that we have. We don't pay electricity to those solar charges, on those solar charges. So we would be, again, not paying, but collecting fees on those as well.
Okay, great. So going back to maintenance, what I don't want to happen is like, we actually have users here that take advantage of the system, pay a nominal fee. Wouldn't it make sense to raise it just a little bit for future maintenance costs? Because here's what I don't want to have happen. I don't know what these things cost to put in, but let's say these grants go away, which is possible over time, and that we need to install chargers or remove them. We don't have enough maintenance for that, and let's just throw it out there for $50,000. I don't want to dip into the general fund when $50,000 could go to a new park improvement, or a picnic table, or some landscaping design. We actually have an opportunity here to build in maintenance costs over time, that this is self-sufficient and self-funding, rather than dipping into any other funds across the city. And I'm not asking for a gigantic raise here. I'm just asking for staff to come and recommend something that keeps the use and the maintenance and the operations within its own budget, much like we do with our enterprise funds, right? And we want to break even. And right now, as you know, we, in the past, we've taken our enterprise funds, and we were short every time because we wanted to give the cheapest rate possible, but we weren't even paying for our costs, and we were raiding funds across the board. That's what I don't want to get into. My recommendation, and what I'd like to see, unless we can address it now, is that staff come back with just a slightly higher estimate for what maintenance would be, and that we bring this back to council with that, so that we actually have a rainy day fund to maintenance this, and then we can approve this probably on consent.
Sure. Just to quickly address that, we strategically kept these rates at 47 cents per kilowatt for several reasons. One, we looked at the comparable locations where folks have the opportunity to charge. For example, the Napa outlets charges 40 cents per kilowatt. The town of Yountville charges 42 cents per kilowatt. Across the street at the Walgreens, they charge 40 cents per kilowatt. There are, there is still a free charger across the street at the Ole Health by tractor support. So what we wanted to do is, it's a market supply and demand. Is there demand for these chargers? Absolutely. But we still wanted to provide that opportunity for the community to come in and charge. We wanted to provide them the locations like City Hall. I get it. I'm a finance guy, and if it were up to me, I'd be 100% cost recovery. I think with, speaking with Eric, our Public Works Director, and myself, is I think we set the rates at what we've recommended and keep an eye on them. We don't want to price out our own community and have them go elsewhere to charge was one of the reasons behind this.
So can we revisit, when can we revisit this policy? Can we bring it back in a year to see how?
Yeah, absolutely. We can bring it back as part of our, as part of our fee schedule every year. We can look at it a year. That was the original intention. The reason is PG&E rates are so volatile, and they will continue to be volatile. So we want to continue to come back every year and adjust those rates if we see the increase in electricity charging. If we see we're not collecting and these systems are requiring more maintenance than usual, then again, we'll adjust at that point as well.
So rather than coming back to the council for that every time and doing that, is there a way that we can tie it to PG&E rates, to where the prices is adjusted on an annual basis? I don't think the policy says that in terms of, you know, these rates are based on what we pay for electricity.
Correct. They're not. And my understanding is, again, PG&E rate setting goes through its own process with the Public Utilities Commission.
So do we, right? You know, so we need to go through that. I'm wondering if there's a way to automate that, like sort of like the Consumer Price Index.
Sure.
Right? Things are tied to inflation. Things are tied to what PG&E is going to jack us up with.
We could. Absolutely.
Like, I'd like to see that in there, too, right? Again, this is a cost-recovery thing that I think people are taking advantage of, and we want to give them that opportunity. I just want to make sure that it's confined within the, in its own uses, rather than taking else from the city. Because we have that opportunity.
Yep.
And Mr. Holly, I know you want to chime in, but I got a question for you real quick. You mentioned some of the things that have happened in Yountville and in Napa. Every charger that we have, vehicle charger that we have in American Canyon are not all supplied by the city. They have some areas that are supplied by the developer or the establishments as well, correct?
There are some. What we're talking about here is just the ones that are owned and operated by the city.
Okay. I thought you made reference to like, what they were doing at the outlets in...
Yeah, what I was comparing, I was comparing to what choices, what other choices and alternatives those that drive EV have besides the City of American Canyon chargers.
Okay. And as staff, are we encouraging some of our developers to put those type of things in their lots? For instance, I know Vice Mayor Joseph had mentioned Circle K should be one of those locations that we kind of solicit to say, maybe you have the infrastructure to add a supercharger to your location. Because people want that quick charge, not that trickle charge. So I know that's a concern as well. But I know that's a question for another day. We're talking about fees today. Mr. Holly?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, procedurally, to update our fees annually, the council does take action, has to take action. We can't just tie it to a rate increase in PG&E and have it automatically trigger. The council would still have to take action. We do that each December on consent. If we're just talking about inflationary adjustments, or if they're more structural, we'll actually hold another public hearing and provide those structural updates. So what staff is sort of thinking, real simply, is tonight, we can move forward with the proposal as is, and in December, as part of our annual process for looking at our fee schedule, we can come back and provide additional information. Here's how the last 11 months went specifically with the vehicle charging. Here's what our PG&E costs were. Here's what our cost recovery maintenance, you know, and kind of give you a holistic look at this particular aspect of the fee schedule, when you would be already considering all the other fees that we do in our master fee schedule update. And we should have a little better sense of how things look in December.
Yeah, my hope is that we had a holistic look at it now, as we're trying to make a decision on this, and we don't. And that's why I'm bringing it up.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes. Well, first of all, I'm sympathetic to charging something. It was a great idea in the beginning to be free, to encourage electric vehicles and all that. But, you know, now that we're over 40 grand a year, it's time to not be as generous. As to the rate itself, I'm kind of partial to, let's adopt a, you know, a rate today, let's monitor it and update it in the master fee schedule on an annual basis. I think for now, we kind of want to be competitive, but we also want to be in a position where we can justify those increases. It certainly makes sense to say, hey, we should plug in something for replacement and all that. But at this point, we may be hard-pressed to say what that amount should be. And if our rates are competitive with everybody else's, you know, that might be the initial level. I mean, the good news is, you know, all of those chargers aren't going to fall apart in the next 12 months. So, you know, we will have some time to begin to analyze what's going on, figuring out how much idle charges we get and so forth. So I'm okay with moving forward with the way it is now, with an understanding that part of the master fee schedule update is to include a more robust analysis of what is it really costing us? What should the fees really be? And go from there. In large part, because I'd like to get this thing implemented and off and running. But I do think Councilmember Oro has a good point, that we should be considering all the costs and making sure we're recovering those revenues. Since I've been on that soapbox for so many years, I'd be remiss if I didn't endorse it. But I think we can handle it through the master fee schedule.
Yeah. And before I open it up to a public comment, I wanted to just have one request with that. If we do that eiling fee, will we have signage to make the consumer aware that if you do not come back to your vehicle, that you will incur a fee?
Yep. We'll work on having signage.
Yeah, I think that's important to make sure.
It'll provide them a 30-minute. We can actually also do that through the software. We use ChargePoint and EV Connect, and we can also have that on there when they agree to use our chargers, to say there will be an idle fee if you don't pick up your vehicle within 30 minutes.
Okay. Good, good, good. So if there's no other questions from council, seeing none, I'd like to open this up for public comment for item number 12. Anybody that would like to ask questions?
I have no speaker cards.
We got somebody interested?
Yep.
Mayor and council, I have a few questions. One, I want to, is there any vandalism on these, do you know about, have they been vandalized anywhere?
No, they have not been vandalized.
Okay, yeah, all right. And then, second, I would like to know a little more about understanding the demand. I guess if they're free, yeah, people are going to come. But I don't see people driving to Yountville to charge for 40 cents, because that's a long way. Or to Napa, to the outlets for 40 cents, because that's a long way. So I'd like to understand a little bit about demand. Where are people going for these? If they're trickle charges, you're not going to drive far to sit up for, I don't know how long it takes, an hour, an hour and a half to charge your car? I have no idea. But if I knew it was free here, dang, I would have bought a electric car last year. Oh, gosh. No gas check? Not paying for that? So, yeah, a little bit about the demand, because I think the demand is important, and where do people go? You know, come in here tonight? Couldn't even walk through the cars because the things are all across the way, so you had to go down and around. So I'd like to see some changes there, because if we can't get in City Hall because of these people charging their cars right in the front, I think that's... So, yeah, a little bit about the demand, because I think that's important. Because if you live here close, you're going to park your car here. You're not going to drive anywhere else because it's too far. So you're going to drive for 40 cents, or you're going to pay 50 cents, because it's right here and you can walk to your car. And so I just consider that as part of the, you know, the thought process, because, yeah, 40 cents is good, but not if you have to go 20, 30 miles. All right, thank you.
Mayor, just real quickly, in response, page 67 of the packet describes the energy consumed over the last four years. Since we added the additional chargers at City Hall, in the last two years, the kilowatt hours has increased. But the data, as far as energy use for those chargers, is shown on page 67 of the packet.
You said 57?
67.
Oh, 67, thank you.
I just have a question. Earlier in the presentation, I heard that there were solar chargers. And I'm just wondering why we couldn't convert all of our chargers to solar chargers, and then you wouldn't have to worry that much about the PG&E costs. It's just a comment. Thank you.
And for the record, that was Joan Bennett.
And I actually just have a little bit of response on that, too, Mayor. It's a great question, and it may be something kind of the way of the future. Those are our newest chargers. We have one over at the Aquatics Parking Lot and one over at the old Napa Junction School. These are quite remarkable. They look like, I don't know, big sort of butterflies or big sort of umbrellas, I suppose, with the solar panels, and they kind of rotate in the sun and then generate electricity. They don't have very big batteries. And so we're testing these out. We got a grant to use them and to own them. They don't always work all the time, because they're not connected to the environment. So the batteries only have a certain shelf life, and then there's only a certain amount of, you know, electricity in the sun. So we don't know how functional they are. We're going to get the data on how they're, how well they're used, and whether they're depleted, whether those batteries are constantly depleted or not. But if, you know, in the future, especially if the technology increases, where those batteries were, you know, more robust, you could see these deployed more frequently. So we've got our eye on it.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Karen Fritz, good evening, everyone. Speaking of the solar panels, everybody's already kind of brought that to the forefront. But the grant that you've received for the other three chargers, I believe you said, are, is, can you use that for the solar charging panels for the cars?
We, I don't know whether we could have. We've already ordered the ones that are going to be hardwired to our facility. But I'm not sure that the grant would have paid for those. But we've decided to go with the ones here at City Hall, mainly because they're, we wanted to create kind of a bank of them in a row, and these had to be kind of spread out. So it was sort of...
Okay, second thing is, oh, gosh, poof, there it goes, Ken. Oh.
Yeah, her name is Beth.
On the, when people stay too long, and you're going to charge them $2.50 or something like that, are they going to have a grace period to learn that prior to getting dinged? Or is that going to be right off the top?
The grace period is 30 minutes. We're going to be working...
Well, I mean, because it's going to be new to them. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I do. So number one, we're going to start with signage, physical signage at the, at the location themselves. But these all, all these, for those of you that have electric cars, you know, those are all connected to your phone. So when you plug in, say, yes, I want to plug in, it will say, oh, by the way, at this point in time, you're going to be charged extra. And it updates you. It provides regular feedback to your... to your phone. You're at 80%. You're at 90%. It communicates with you. And so we're going to have physical signage to remind the folks. They're going to be getting pinged on their phone anyway. And the first 30 minutes is in a grace period. So.
OK, I still have gas, so it's not a problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, just to clarify with that, the 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 new grant that we got, we're going to put in hardwired EV chargers here at City Hall. One is to add more more of a central location here, as Jason said, with a bank of chargers, and also to facilitate our need for charging as well for our own city vehicles.
Thank you. I think we have Nance for a question.
As an EV driver, I didn't realize I could have been charging for free all these years. So now, all all the chargers are now going to have, they're going to be able to get revenue? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Nance.
Mayor Washington, I do have one comment hand raised online.
OK, go ahead.
OK, Vincent Lynn, go ahead, Vincent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you all are doing well this evening. I have a comment about the EV charging rates. Personally, I am one of those EV chargers, EV drivers that have used the free rates, the free rates that have been available at City Hall, as well as the library and Old Napa Junction, as well as the pool. And I would like to commend the city's efforts in having those, because I feel that it pushes, you know, we put our our money where our mouth is when we talk about trying to be more green, being on the forefront of promoting, you know, electric vehicles and reducing gas emissions as a leader in Napa County. I do understand the the requirements for fee recovery and cost recovery. And I would like us, I would, I would ask the town to, ask the city to kind of meter that approach, maybe not go strictly to the 40, 47 cent per kilowatt rate. I think, you know, because once, I think, once rates are established, then the expectations on the user, my expectation would be that these chargers would be upkept more than they currently are. So that would be one, like, for example, the, like, Manager Holly had spoken about, like, the batteries are, the batteries of the solar chargers are pretty low capacity. So they pretty much burn out as soon as you plug into vehicles at the same time. So it would be, it would put a little bit more on the city to help maintain those. And I just wanted to wrap up my comment by saying, I do know that the city of Napa, beyond the outlets, the outlets do have rates, but the city of Napa in downtown still maintains free charging rates. So I wanted that to be included in the public record, that like, if you go to the Napa downtown, those ChargePoint chargers, they're still at, they're still free for charging. So thank you all for your time. Hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Vincent.
Any other people online?
There are no other hands raised online.
Oh, I forgot it. Oh, how are you, how are they going to, how are they going to be paying for, as you're going to have slot machines or, or, I mean, machines, you know, where they put coins in, or they get billed, or how are they going to pay?
No, in order to use all the chargers currently, they have to have an app on your phone. Yeah. And then they just kind of hold the phone near the app, the charger, and then it unlocks the charger so that they can actually plug it into their car. Yeah.
OK, if there's no other public comment, I'd like to close public comment and return to the council for item number 12, for any additional statements, questions, or even a motion. But it looks like we have a question by Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is this, Juan and Manager Holly. So I am an EV owner. I actually have two EVs and a couple of hybrids. You made a statement that we don't have, they're not going to be superchargers. Now, are we set with the 30-minute, then there's an idle rate to to commence after 30 minutes?
Not totally following the question.
So after, so if I if I park my car there for 30 minutes, after 30 minutes, the 250 rate starts kicking in?
Sorry, it's only after your car is fully charged.
Oh, after your car's fully charged.
Yeah, so however long it takes for your car to become fully charged is a function of how how depleted it was when it got here and how fast it gets recharged. And so you will pay essentially with the electricity rate for that electricity to get put in your vehicle. Once you're at 100%, your phone will have given you about four notifications to say, watch out, you're at 100%. And then you have 30 minutes to move your vehicle. Otherwise, you're now just taking up a space that someone else could be using. You're not getting electric anymore, because you're already full, and you're really kind of hogging that space. So it's it is meant to be punitive. We give you a 30-minute grace period before the punitive part shows up.
Understood. After it's fully charged. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah. Councilmember Lamatina?
I like the fee. I think that it's comparable. If you park anywhere and you feed a meter, if you don't continue to feed the meter, your car gets towed. So, yeah.
OK, if there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make this motion, but I want to add, this motion includes a one-year review of everything, including full maintenance costs, and how that might look to where it becomes a full cost recovery system. So with that said, and considered, and part of this motion, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, a resolution amending the master fee schedule to include new user fees for electric vehicle charging stations.
I'll second that. We have a second roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. The next item on public hearing is item 13, Public Hearing Regarding the Proposed Solid Waste Overage Fee and Amendment to the Recology American Canyon Franchise Agreement. Mr. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant Public Works Director Norm Woods will explain this item.
Good evening, Norm.
Good evening. So the issue here is the city, on March 1st, entered into an amended and restated agreement with Recology American for solid waste recyclables, organic waste collections, processing, disposal. Within that agreement, we did not have a specified language that talked about overages. On October 31st of 2024, Recology American Canyon submitted a request to amend that agreement to include the language that defines overages and how overages would be assessed, and the rate for the overages, because the current agreement does not state this. Essentially, Recology is showing up and on, when they're showing up and looking at bins and looking at carts, there's additional trash that is there, and they're having to take care of that trash. And there's no fee. There's nothing being done about it. So this needs to be added into that agreement. With that stated, the overage means excessive volume of materials and containers such as lids and containers that are full. So if you show up and your trash can is flipped open, and there's bags on the side, that those bags would have a fee attached to them. But that fee doesn't come the very first time. It doesn't come the second time. It comes the third time after you've been contacted and you have not addressed that issue. And the overage fee, that's that's pretty much it. The collector should not be required to collect more than more than that, 32 gallons of overages, unless the customer has scheduled such collection. So you can still schedule it to be picked up, but you can no longer just put it out there and anticipate that the city would pick it up, or Recology would pick it up without there being a consequence with it. So it helps out of Recology, and essentially, it helps our customers understand what an overage fee is and everything that's going on there. And the fees are, if you guys look in your packet for the residential, because this is a residential and a commercial issue, $15 for carts. And for commercial, the carts are $15, and the bins would be $75. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Norman. Are there any clarified questions or concern from council? And I will go with Vice Mayor Joseph first.
Mayor, I just want to mention, we also have the General Manager, Derek Nelson, from Recology here. If you had any questions for Derek.
Yeah, from my perspective, this is just a question of fairness. If somebody is basically taking advantage of the service by putting in overages, they should pay for it. I mean, it's kind of like if if you're using a 30-gallon service, but you're really at 45 to 50 gallons, you really ought to pay the right fee. And and I know Recology has historically been very good, and even it's built in. You get to basically game the system twice before you pay anything.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with the concept or the fees, with just an understanding that we don't want to go the exact opposite and say, OK, I noticed the lid is above the structure by three inches. I'm going to call that an overage. You know, as long as the drivers are just as reasonable in enforcing it as they have been in picking up the excess, I think it'll be fine. And anybody who complains is probably grumbling, because they wanted to get something for nothing. And we've already eliminated that with EV chargers. We might as well do it with garbage.
Well, the intention is the fairness aspect of it, and the city actually being a partner with Recology, Recology being a partner with the community. So this isn't something that we're trying to aha you. This is something that we're actually trying to work with and correct and help Recology out in our city. So, yeah, that intention isn't coming from malicious places, coming from a partnership place. So, yeah.
Got you, got you. That's it. Councilmember Lamatina?
Hello, my question is, how are we doing putting our items in the right bins? Have we checked that in a while?
Did you want to, oh, sorry, but I was going to say, did you want to talk about that?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Derek Nelson, General Manager for Recology American Canyon. And to answer your question, American Canyon is doing, you know, relatively well in terms of placing things in the right bins. At our location on 2021 Broadway, we have a MRF, which is a material recovery facility where we sort through recyclables. With 1383, there's been a lot of audits required, both of garbage, organic material, and recyclable material. And we're, I would say, on track with what you see in most communities in California. Our MRF has a residual rate of about 20%. So 20% of the tonnage that comes in there is not recyclable. But it's to be expected, and that's why we have MRF, so that we can get rid of those contaminants.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open up to public comment. Anyone with public comment?
I have no speaker cards for this item.
OK, looks like Fran's about to ask a question.
Fran, Fran's got a comment. And I have no hands raised online.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see Recology here, because I have a question for you. I work, it happens to be in Vallejo, a thrift shop. And Recology told us if it was not closed, they would charge, they would charge us a lot more, or they wouldn't take the garbage. Is that correct?
The intent isn't to nickel and dime for like, an inch cracked lid. I have some pictures in my book here. We're talking when people make a snowman on top of their garbage can with carts with bags on top of it.
So it has to be closed.
So the service we provide is by volume. So you can subscribe to a 32-gallon cart, or a 64-gallon cart, or a 96-gallon cart. But we've seen people put 96 gallons in a 32-gallon cart. And so that's where, that's the intent, is to to get people to right-size their cans, their containers. Because oftentimes, that stuff spills out into the streets. It creates blight. They're not paying for their fair share of disposal. There's additional fuel that's required by the trucks. It takes up routing capacity, because the trucks can only hold so much. There's a lot of reasons why people need to be in the right-sized containers.
And I have another question. I have a big can to put the food waste in. And I have hardly nothing in it, because I'm, I live alone, and I, you know, I don't have a lot of food. And I don't like to keep it for two, I like to get rid of it each week, because it, I have fruit flies or flies in it. Is there any way to get smaller cans for that?
Yes. So in that 2020, 2024 amendment, we increased the sizes available for green waste cans. So you can get a 32-gallon green waste cart. So if you want to give me your address after this, I can take your info down and swap it out.
Yeah. Well, I I have a lot of waste cans for, because I have the eucalyptus trees, and we have, and I use them. And but those cans are hard for me to maneuver, because they're big. But for the food one, there's nothing hardly in it. So a small one would be great. I can handle the little one better. Thank you.
Yeah, we can get you a smaller can.
Any other? You said no one was online, right?
There are no, no hands raised online.
OK, if there's no more public comment, I'd like to close public comment for item number 13. Return to the council for additional statements, questions, or a motion.
Yeah, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a Resolution Number 2025, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the city's solid waste franchise agreement with Recology American Canyon to address residential and commercial overage rates and language modification for overages.
I'll second.
All right. And thank you, Norman and Derek. Thank you. And we have a second. So we get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Next item on public hearing is item number 14, Gianovi Tentative Parcel Map and Design Permit Extension. Mr. Holly?
Senior Planner William, he will have this matter, Mayor. Thank you, William.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, members of the City Council, and members of the public. Yeah, the the topic at hand is the time extension for the Givenoni Tentative Parcel Map and Design Permit. It's a brief presentation. The project, a little bit of background, is a 2.4 million square feet high cube warehouse on 163 acres, in a 208-acre site in the industrial zone. The site is between Green Island Road and Devlin Road. But the the design and the parcel map was approved by the City Council on March 21st, 2023. And the applicant has been working to get their final map developed or and start construction. But there's a bit of delay. The applicant in November submitted an application for an extension of the map and design permit, and that requires public hearing, and that's why we're here today. They're requesting a one-year extension from March 21st, 2025 to to end at March 21st, 2026. The municipal code allows projects to have a temporary tentative parcel map up to three extensions, and they are required to be approved by the City Council. And that's it. It's a request for an extension. The applicant is here. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, William. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Hearing then. At this time, I'd like to open a, open to public comment for item number 14. Any questions?
I have a speaker card from Ernie Nodel.
Good evening, Ernie. Good evening, Ernie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Ernie Nodel. I'm with Orchard Partners. And we're based in Lafayette, California. And I hope council will indulge me, and I may need a little more than three minutes to make my presentation. I've always told people that American Canyon is a small city that's doing very big things. And we were a part of that. We were the developer of the Napa Logistics Park. It's located just south of the airport, and we developed a park to attract large logistics users in an area dominated by the wine industry. IKEA was our first tenant. They occupied six-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. It was their very first dedicated customer delivery center in the country. We then attracted Amazon, and they, we created the largest delivery station at the time for Amazon here in American Canyon. And then finally, PG&E located their regional service center in our park. During the course of our project, we made many commitments to benefit the city of American Canyon. Some of them you saw tonight. The study for the, for the Highway Twenty-Nine, we contributed a quarter of a million dollars towards that study. But we made many other commitments. And what we wanted to do was attract the twenty-first century businesses to American Canyon. And in order to do that, we needed to provide a lot of benefits to the city. One of our biggest commitments was to build an entirely new sanitary sewer system, including replacing the Green Island Road pump station. This state-of-the-art system replaced and enhanced very old and undersized systems. This system benefited existing industrial parks, such as the Green Island Road Industrial Park and the Tower Road Industrial. But it was also going to accommodate our development, Napa Logistics Park, the Napa Airport Corporate Center, which has not been built yet, and the Geovinoni Logistics Park, which also has not yet been built. On December eighteenth of two thousand and eighteen, this City Council approved our subdivision improvement and reimbursement agreement for the Napa Logistics Park Phase Two. We agreed to provide a number of public improvements as a condition of that agreement, and the city agreed to collect fair share costs from our, from other developers and reimburse us. Article three point A of that agreement describes the defined permanent sewer solution and the simple formula for other developers to share. What you have in front of you is called a memorandum of understanding. This is something that we've been working on with the city for a very long time.
I'm gonna let you, go ahead and continue.
Thank you very much. What this memorandum of understanding was intended was to make it very simple for the city to advise the other developers what they will owe us when they complete their projects. And the math was very, very simple. There was a total cost of the project. Every one of these cost-sharing parties would have a certain amount of square footage that they would build, as we did. And we just share proportionately in those costs. We fronted the entire cost of the project. It was eight-point-eight million dollars. And we haven't seen another set yet because nobody's built anything yet. What you will see on the last page of this memorandum of understanding are the various projects that were identified as cost-sharing projects. You will see the Geovinoni project in two phases. And what you're going to be looking at tonight is just their first phase of the project, where they were going to build about one-point-one million square feet. Two years ago, on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, the City Council approved the Geovinoni's tentative map and their design permit, which are the subject of the extension that you're going to be looking at tonight. In the tentative map agreement, Article sixty-three, and in the development, or pardon me, the design permit, Article seventy-one, it describes the requirement for the developer to reimburse us for their fair share of the costs. The article states, quote, "Per the subdivision improvement and reimbursement agreement between the City of American Canyon and DWF four, NLP two, recorded in Napa County, the applicant shall reimburse the city its fair share cost for the construction of the permanent sewer solution, which consists of new off-site public gravity sewer, pump station, and force main, which replaced the existing Green Island, pardon me, the Green Island pump station." This is the same condition that's been imposed on other developers. It's consistent in every entitlement agreement they have. It was consistent in our agreements that we had throughout the course of our eight-year project. What's different in this one is that there are other provisions in, in, in here stating some specifics. The first one is the fair share cost is based on the project's sewer flow. That's untrue. It's based on square footage, not sewer flow. Then it states, "The fair share cost based on the project's sewer flow is twelve percent of the total cost of the required sewer improvements." Not sure where the twelve percent comes from, but if you look at the last chart in our memorandum of understanding, their share for the first phase is twenty-four percent of the total cost. It also states, "The total cost of the sewer improvement is six-point-seven million dollars." That was only a portion of the project. You will see on the second last page, it describes all of the costs that we incurred over that eight-year period. The total cost was eight-point-eight million dollars. So that's incorrect. And then it concludes the provision that the applicant's fair share obligation is eight-hundred-and-five thousand dollars. It's using all the wrong math. According to our MOU, and I, and I'll rephrase, it's a draft MOU because we have not had this executed yet. But the total amount would be not eight-hundred-and-four thousand, but two-point-one million dollars. When this was published, I contacted the Public Works Director. And I explained there were some very gross errors in this provision. Over the next few months, we heard various excuses of why this happened, but we were never advised how this city was going to correct it. Eventually, staffs, staff stated that Jason Holly was taking responsibility for the errors and that he would own it. In October of last year, we presented this final version of the memorandum of understanding to provide the tool for calculating other developers' fair share. After repeated requests for asking Jason Holly to sign the MOU, Jason responded by email on November fourteenth that the Geovinoni project wasn't even a cost-sharing project. With no explanation, we have been trying to communicate since then, and he has refused to respond to us.
Mr. Odell, Odell, how much more time do you need?
Pardon me?
How much more time do you need?
One minute.
What minute you have?
Curiously, right about the same time, the, the Geovinoni project requested an extension on these agreements. We were never made aware of this extension request, and we only found out about it when we reviewed the City Council agenda yesterday. I didn't even receive the Gov. Delivery email notification that the staff reports indicate was sent out on January twenty-eighth. I hereby request that City Council not approve this extension unless it is conditioned with the appropriate provision for reimbursement of their fair share costs.
That's your time, Mr. Odell. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Councilmember Oro?
Just want to make, we're done with the staff comments and public comments?
Why? Just want to hold on for a second. We're still on public comment. Do you want Mr. Holly to address anything?
Mayor, I'd recommend entertaining whether there are other public comments and then closing the public hearing, and we can go from there.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment?
I have nothing online.
Okay. I'm gonna close public comment and return back to council for additional statement, questions, and/or a motion. Councilmember Oro?
Thank you, Mr. Nodel, for bringing this forward to us. I'd kind of heard about this in the background. Listen, I think the Napa Logistics Project, Mr. Nodel has been a good partner to the city for a very long time, decades, actually. And really brought forward what they said and delivered what they said they would. Those PG&E jobs are real jobs that will be here for a very long time. Amazon's here. IKEA was a big win. It's too bad we're losing them, but you know, that's a real project. They met all their commitments. I have to take his word seriously because I know he's delivered. And I know that there's a request for an extension for the next phase of what's going to make our Green Island District better, with new jobs, twenty-first century work. They have till March thirty-first. I would like staff to come back. My recommendation is for staff to come back and so we can have a better, longer discussion about this, or at least have in some form, even if it's not here. And I recommend that we table this until the council has more information about both sides of this. Because you know, what's presented to me today gives me great pause to move it, and we still have until March thirty-first. There's like two or three meetings until then. I'm not ready to make a decision on this tonight. I'd like more information.
Mayor, through, in response to Councilmember Oro, it'd be the city attorney's recommendation, we continue the matter. I think it would be to the first meeting in March. I don't think the next meeting would be enough time. There's been issues raised that are not in the record. And factually, what Councilmember Oro has raised, there does need to be response on the issues raised under the applicable constraints of the Subdivision Map Act and our ordinance. So we would actually recommend continuance to a date certain. I think it would be the first meeting.
March fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Vice Mayor Joseph?
I would concur. I think I, you know, heard about some of the issues, but none of the particulars. This does seem to be a difficult issue because there seems to be a lot of money involved. And I think it would be in all of our best interests if there's enough things in play that we wait until the first meeting in March to see whether or not staff can work with both developers to figure out some kind of reasonable solution. And to do it rather quickly so that we still have a little bit of leverage in all of this. I would agree that I think Napa Logistics has been an excellent project. I think Geovinoni is going to be an excellent project. You know, had, you know, some of the delays that are impacting Geovinoni are not of their own doing, and we're trying to resolve that. But be that as it may, these are the kinds of conditions that need to be hammered out before an extension is given, rather than afterwards. So I certainly would support continuing it until the first meeting in March.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to reschedule item number fourteen.
I would make a motion to continue this matter until March fourth meeting of the City Council.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Yes, and thank you, Mr. Odell. Thank you. Business item, moving on to the business item number fifteen, the Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project. Mr. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. Senior Engineer Ron Renata will have this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, public. I'm Ron Renata, City of American Canyon.
Do you have a presentation, Ron, that's?
On the, on the desktop.
On the desktop is your item for the monitor.
Thank you. Thank you. This is an exhibit for the project that I'm bringing forward to you tonight. Again, I'm Ron Renata, City of American Canyon, Public Works, Senior Civil Engineer. Here on behalf of Director Erica Smithies, she's out ill, and so just happy to fill in for her. So the item we're bringing before you is kind of the next steps for the Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project, which would be for the award of a construction contract. A little bit of background for you, this goes all the way back to two thousand and seventeen, when the City Council approved the Clark Ranch Master Plan in response to overwhelming public support for expanded amenities and services. Subsequently, the Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project builds on that vision by creating a space for outdoor learning and family gatherings. The receipt of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar outdoor environmental education facilities grant from California State Parks underscores the project's importance and provides substantial funding for its implementation. The Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project is to provide several outdoor amenities that enhance educational and recreational opportunities while preserving the site's natural environment. Key components include an outdoor classroom, a nature trail, demonstration gardens, and interpretive signage and exhibits. The outdoor classroom will feature shaded seating for approximately forty people, essentially a large gazebo, and promoting environmental education and community gathering. Demonstration gardens will showcase native and pollinator-friendly plants, furthering, further supporting local biodiversity. The nature trail will provide ADA-compliant access and a formalized route for visitors to explore the wetlands area without disturbing the natural environment. The interpretive signage and exhibits along the trail will offer interactive learning opportunities, highlighting topics such as local wildlife, native plants, migration patterns, and wetlands conservation. There is also a restroom facility planned with this project. So with that, the city solicited competitive bids for the project on December third of two thousand and twenty-four. The engineer's estimate was five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand and seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. On January ninth of this year, three bids were received. The lowest responsible and responsive bid was by a contractor called Marina Landscape for six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, if I'm gonna round off here. The next bid was about forty-five percent higher at about nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. And the last bid was about fifty-six percent higher at over a million dollars. As I mentioned, the bid submitted by Marina Landscape was about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. They are the apparent low bid. We have vetted the contractor's qualifications as well as their bid and found them to be satisfactory and acceptable. And so with that, moving on to the fiscal considerations, the financial impacts, the, the current CIP, capital budget, provides for a project budget of about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Upon completion of the design and receipt of the bids, it was determined that an additional five-hundred thousand dollars was required to complete this project for construction. And so that includes, it's inclusive of other construction-related expenditures like contingency at twenty percent, materials testing services, and construction management. With that, staff worked with the Finance Department and identified the Park Impact Fee Fund as a potential source for this five-hundred thousand dollar increase. And with that, if council approves this, the additional request would decrease the fund balance of the Park Impact Fund fee by two. fee by 2, 1.2 million dollars. With that, if you have any comments or questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Ron. Are there any clarified questions from council? Councilmember oral.
Yeah, I'm on fire tonight. Thank you for this, but what am I looking at on there? How do I know this is special? Like, it's a bunch of black lines and maybe there's a gazebo I see. The staff report didn't mention the bathrooms. I'm glad there's bathrooms. And I would argue today in front of this council that any parks should be a bathroom-first policy that we do and try to make that around to go around, make sure that we get bathrooms built. What are we, what are we spending this money on? I don't have any conceptual drawings. I don't know what's happening there. It doesn't feel right. And I say this only because we've had some projects come to us and I'm thinking Napa Cove that looked okay and came out bad. And right here, we have a prime piece of property that probably is the most visited recreational area in American Canyon. And I don't have a guarantee that it's gonna look any good. The only thing I'm seeing are black lines. Can you describe a little bit about what's going on here?
Sure. If you look at the exhibit that's up before you on the screen. So if you're, hopefully, most of you, if not all of you are familiar with the Wetlands Edge Parking Lot and the fitness facilities that we have out there. The improvements for this project basically extend into the open space south of the parking lot. You can see towards the east side, the right side of the plan, there's a circular feature that has a 1, 2, 3, 4 hexagon. That is the 40-person-capacity gazebo, if you will. To the northeast of that, closer to Wetlands Edge Drive, is where the proposed restroom is going to be located. And then the line share of the improvements are basically the trails and the garden improvements.
What is the, the cross black, the darkened black area there?
Those are the paths.
Those are new paths that are going to be there.
Correct.
And then there's existing paths that are going to be improved. And then I imagine those are trees and shrubbery that is going to be around there?
Correct.
And have we looked at any specific design concept? Usually we see a design concept of what something would look like. Is that what we're approving tonight to be able to see that? Or do we already have that? I don't recall seeing any of that, honestly.
We, I don't think we have, well, it's a good question. Do we have landscape architecture plans and landscaping plans?
Correct. We do. I apologize. I don't have them in front of me for us tonight.
Yeah, we, we didn't include them in the packet and we certainly can share them after the meeting or we can bring this back and share those plans in more detail. Those, it's a combination of shrubs and trees with a roughly 40-foot diameter. How big is the pavilion? What's the diameter of the pavilion?
I would estimate it's about 25 feet in diameter.
25-foot diameter. How big, do you know how big the pavilions are over like Shenandoah Park and those? And that's kind of in your neighborhood?
Not off the top of my head. The larger one, it's probably on the order of, I'm gonna guess, 20 by 20.
Would the landscape plan have like materials and wood and things like that that we're using there and the types of trees?
Yes.
It would have, yes, it will have a list of materials for both the pathways and the planted materials. It's gonna just have the names of those plants. It's not gonna have a full color palette necessarily of all the species that we could go and print those out.
I'll let you in on a little secret, Jason. I geek out and I actually look up what those plants look like.
Okay.
Mature. You know, like, I don't know if this will be like shaded trees. I know that land is probably brackish. So it's probably limited on what kind of trees you can grow there. I don't know anything about the soil structure there and what that might look like. I just feel for a million dollars, I don't know enough. And that gives me pause and hesitation.
That's a fair point. Can you elaborate a little at all how the plant selection process worked and who was involved in that?
There was a landscape architect. They were, I believe, a partner with RSA up in Napa. They're the ones that put the plans together. Right now, that is the extent of my knowledge.
So we had, we had a consultant that did the design work and they had a subconsultant that was a landscape architect and they came up with the, with the plant list and the spacings and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I know how, I know how it works. I just haven't seen it. So like, listen, I love this. I'm glad we're doing something with it. You know, when I joined in 2017, Clark Ranch was one of the first things that we've done and sadly we haven't, that I approved. And sadly, we haven't done much with that. At least we'll get to do something on this side. And this is a very active area for, it's actually a regional thing now. I keep going, every time I'm out there, I'm like, do you live here? They're like, no. I have Napa or Sonoma or Vallejo or Benicia. So it's very popular and I want it to be able to be presented well. I'm not ready to vote on this tonight until I have more to review, just, just because of the price tag here. We're looking at, we're moving it from like a million dollars, right? $950,000?
All in for the project budget.
Yeah, and this, this is too important for me to just say yes to what I'm looking at right now. And I would love for the public to see it, too.
And do you, I don't know if we recall or not, Ron, whether we took these plans at all to PCS or OSAT? I can't remember if our review process included going to them. Oh, we have OSAT's commissioner right here. Maybe Nance can answer that question for us. I don't recall.
I was just going through the packages for open space because we did, or OSAT, excuse me. We did review this planting plan and plant selection and irrigation plan and all this stuff at a meeting this last year and I haven't found it yet, but I think it would help the council to see that. I didn't know about this increase, so I can't, I have no, nothing to say about that. But I know that, that all that information was provided to OSAT's. And it's, it's actually, looking at that, the number of plants that are there is incredible. This actually looks like less plants than I thought that I was reading, so I think it is a pretty big project.
Yeah, and I'm sure it is.
I agree with you. I think it makes sense to look at the whole thing.
And I'm sure it is, but this is not doing it for me, so.
Are you done? Vice Mayor Joseph?
A couple of things. You know, some of this is kind of a cautionary tale because I remember, what, I guess, eight years ago now? We got a grant for 250 with the idea that we'd probably match it for, you know, 500. And because it's years later, probably the same thing, it just costs more. And so it, it's a reminder that the more we're able to take a grant or take any project and make it happen today instead of five years from now is always a good thing. More specifically, I'm kind of, you know, the, I'm looking more at the, to the left of the screen, the walkway that leads to the three picnic tables. And the landscaping that's envisioned almost acts as if it ignores that unofficial trail that goes down. And I'm just curious to see what's the effect of that. You know, we, we still need to have some kind of an access, you know, or we have had the access and I'd like to see that preserved. In fact, I remember when we first brought this up, there was discussion about creating an access from Wetlands Edge Drive, kind of cutting across and connecting up that way. And that obviously has changed over the years, probably all, all to good. So I'm a little worried about how this is gonna impact the unofficial trail that's there. And then secondly, my own personal interest where those three picnic tables are. I would love to see a larger, basically a picnic, a covered shelter for picnics so that you could handle, you know, family units of 50 people or so. And, and I think that can be done somewhere down the road. I'm not suggesting we add to this budget. But just that there's four trees, I think, that are presumed to be planted that would be, end up being torn out if we ever did go ahead with a picnic shelter. So if we could either not plant them for the time being, assuming the rest of the council likes the idea of a covered picnic shelter, or at least plant them somewhere so they don't get in the way if we ever did. So my main concern is if we wanted to see a picnic shelter there, you know, can we tweak the plans to make sure there, the trees and the landscaping doesn't get in the way?
Councilmember oral?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on that. And Vice Mayor Joseph, I, I think, if I recall correctly, a lot of that has to do with not ruining the view shed from that area. And I think that's one of the reasons. You put a structure out there in an open space. And I think that was, if I recall, there was a lot of consideration around that. And so that's why you wouldn't do it there. But I agree with you on, again, like, you're echoing what I said. I don't, I don't know because I don't have the plans to see what's over there. I don't even know what that Noah's Ark is on top of those three picnic tables. What is that, right? And so I have a lot of questions about this.
That's the drainage thing that's going on there. It's already there, I think.
Yeah, okay. See, I didn't know that either. Yeah. So anyways, I just feel like I need more information before I could vote on it.
Yeah, and I would probably lean toward what Councilmember Oro was saying as well. I just think we, we need something a little bit more visual pleasing and, and give us a better picture of what it would look like. I, I kind of agree. It's kind of hard to tell here what we're talking about and I think the public would, would benefit. And I'm, I'm more inclined to say that we should continue this part two, but I'd like to open up the public comment if we don't have anyone else on council that has clarifying questions.
No, we, we have someone online. I have no cards. Okay, I mean, we've got a comment from Scott Thomason. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you, council members. I live in American Canyon and I know all of the council members here. And I'm, I may be putting the cart before the horse here, and so I apologize if I am. And you've actually answered one of my questions, which had to do with, is a restroom planned for the, for the enhancement project? And I'm, I'm heartened to know that there is one planned or a facility. But I did, I still had a couple of questions. But they really are more about once the, once the enhancement project has been implemented, how will the city use the outdoor classroom to promote environmental education and community engagement? And also, has there been any discussion yet by the city regarding reaching out to the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation to help provide staffing and curriculum for the classroom? And certainly in light of the already existing environmental programs that the Parks Foundation has created and now uses throughout the school year and summer at the Wetlands, it seems logical that the city would consider partnering with the Parks Foundation either in the design and/or the implementation of this enhancement project before and after its completion, especially given the expertise and experience that exists within the Parks Foundation that could ensure the ongoing success of the enhancement project. I mean, we all want this to work and, and be successful. And the phrase cross pollination kind of came to mind when I was thinking about this and reading about this. And it's a great opportunity. There are so many people that come out to the Wetlands every day. Councilman Oro is absolutely right. They come from all over the Bay Area now for different reasons and to enjoy what is, what is there. So we all want to see this succeed. And those were my questions. And if they're, and if they're premature, I'm happy to wait until later to revisit them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Ron, I know there were several questions inside there, so I mean, any of them that you feel comfortable responding to?
I apologize. Can you help me? What question did you hear there?
I think one of the questions was how are we going to program the, the educational pagoda or whatever it's called?
Mayor, I'm happy to kind of take that, take that question. It, it strikes me that two of our key players would be able to answer these questions aren't here tonight. And so both Ron and I are struggling a little bit to provide the council answers. And clearly, we haven't brought back to you all the information you need to make a decision. So we, fortunately, the deadlines that we're looking at would really be March 9th. That's, we have a 60-day deadline to accept or reject the bids. And so I say fortunately because March 9th is after our next council meeting, or March 4th, I should say, council meeting. So, you know, the staff recommendation at this point is that we bring back to you on March 4th information that you're looking for, the information that you've asked about, more pictures, more plant lists, and a better description of what, what this project is actually gonna involve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holly. So then in that case, do you still have more questions?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate the idea that we don't want to obstruct the view shed, but the possibility of where might a covered public shelter work in that area? Nothing too specific, more conceptual, but I, I just think it would be a nice amenity. I do appreciate the idea that blocking the view shed is a bad idea, but so somewhere else if there's a spot, that would be great. If we can add that to the list of things that staff will come back with on the 4th.
I will only kind of mention this and you actually triggered my thoughts. I appreciate your comments, Nance. The plan that we had brought to OSAT's actually had some more plantings and what you're seeing is kind of a reduced version of that. Some of our estimates as we were going out to bid were higher costs this week. We gotta kind of scale this back. We did not end up going back through OSAT's with that, partially because of the timing in December and commission members and parts moving pieces going back and forth. So the, the version they saw, it was a, was a more robust version, more costly version. So at this point, the timeframes we have involved, we're not gonna be going back to OSAT's with, kind of showing the updated plan. We won't really have time to do that before March 9th, I don't believe. If we can, if we can work that in the schedule, we might be able to do that. But at this point, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that. So just sort of a, and I say that only because we didn't have a conversation with OSAT's about future covered areas. We did talk about the pavilion itself that is proposed, but we didn't talk about additional picnic shelter areas. So that's, that's a bit of a new conversation. And I think where we are at this point with the project isn't maybe providing for those new things, but saying maybe let's space the trees out a little bit. So if in the future, we wanted to put something else out there, we'd go back through a process to look at that. So rather than have to cut down a tree to do that or something. So and then that's, I think, a pretty simple fix is just to space the trees a little bit further rather than actually bringing back concepts of, okay, we'll put your shares here. That's a, that's a more robust conversation.
Yeah, but thank you, Ron, for, you know, presenting today. It looks like we need to continue item number 15.
Mayor Washington, I do have one more comment from online.
Okay.
Okay. I have Janelle Selick. Janelle, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Janelle Selick. I'm both a resident and executive director of the Parks Foundation. I've just been listening in and watching along. I mean, I think for one, from a Parks Foundation perspective, we're really thrilled to see this project moving forward. I remember several years ago, we wrote a letter of support for this grant and excited to see it moving forward. And I can't underscore the, the need enough for some kind of anchor space for education. And although we're working on our own project just down the road with the Ecology Center, you know, those two projects, I think, have their own niche in the community. And I really see them being able to work together synergistically. And I know it will, you know, even after the Ecology Center is up and, and running, we'll be able to utilize and hope to be able to utilize the education space at the Wetlands Trailhead as well. It's, it's used constantly by, by our foundation for education programs, by schools, community members. So we're really excited about it and we do hope to be able to utilize it and continue to partner with the city on education and conservation programs at that site and then also at the Future Ecology Center. And then I think from a community member perspective, I am curious what, you know, the restroom is, is desperately needed as anyone who's out there regularly knows. So I was curious if- who's out there regularly knows. So I was curious if what the plan is for restroom and how would that be funded if it's not funded through this grant? I know it's, it's been in the works and it's on everyone's mind. So I just want to reiterate the need for the restroom out there, permanent restroom space. And then beyond that, just excited to see this, this area progressing in both
Janelle, you're muted. If you could unmute, please finish your comment.
Sorry about that. I'm not sure where I went out, but were you able to hear what I said at all, or?
Yeah, we got through the need for the bathrooms.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just, you know, anyone who is out there regularly, it's, you know, it's obvious from the thousands of users each month how important the restroom is. So I was just curious from a community perspective, how that, how that will be funded if it's not funded through this grant and what the timeline for that is.
Thank you, Janelle.
Look, yeah, looking forward to seeing the expanded plans come back to council.
Thank you for your comment, Janelle.
Just real quickly, Mayor, there is a bathroom proposed as part of this bid package. It's not funded by the grant. It's funded by the extra funding brought in. But it is part of the package.
Okay, good to know, good to know. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
I have no one else online.
Okay, so I will entertain a Karen, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Everyone. Karen Fritz, again. Okay, I'm looking at the plantings of all these things here, and I'm trying to figure out, I think this little group over here is probably some trees that have already been planted. Okay, they, when you're walking out there, they look extremely close together because they're going to grow up. And I don't know how many bushes they're planning on putting out there. But also, they need to take into consideration of putting things 15 feet, if not maybe 20, off the path because they grow and then they encroach. And trees are going to drop things on the path. And if you have people that are ADA, they're going to be out there. That could be a hazard for them when they're walking. And we certainly don't want anybody to be falling down over acorns or branches or what have you. It's hard enough dodging what people's dogs leave around there. So I want, I would like that to be taken into consideration when you're doing the plantings. And also, they said native plants. I certainly hope that's the case because I know walking around some of the new warehousing, I've gotten, looked at some of the tags, and then I've of some of the trees and bushes they have, and I looked up online. And it specifically says California invasive species on some of these things. So I would like to, I would certainly hope that they ensure that that's not the case, what they're putting out here. And as Councilmember Oro stated, you know, you want to do things that are going to be able to thrive in that particular environment because it is pretty harsh out there. And getting back to the bushes and the brush that they're going to be putting there, like I said, to have them back far enough off the pathway because we do have wildlife. And it appears that one particular type of that tends to go there and pup during pupping season. And they would tend to be aggressive, especially towards young children and people's pets. And they could hide in those brushes, bushes and stuff like that if they're really close to the path. And that wouldn't be a very good thing for anyone. So just some things to consider. Oh, yes. And the restrooms, I know you're not going to be happy, but maybe whoever's on call at Public Works in the evenings, they could go out maybe at nine o'clock and lock them up so that when somebody goes out in the morning, they're still nice. Just a thought.
Thank you for your comment, Karen.
Hi, Mayor. City Council, Mary Tabbert. I just want to put some thoughts in your head. This was approved at $450,000 in fiscal year 2024 to 2025. And it is now more than double what they're, they're requesting, more than double what that is. And by their own words, are scaling back what's being done. Please, when you look at this, scrutinize it. That's a lot of money for plants. And I love plants, but you're asking for more than double and you're scaling back. Doesn't make a lot of sense. Plus, not only is it this 950,000, it's also the 250,000 for the grant. That's a lot of money. Please scrutinize it and see why is it more than double and why is it being scaled back? That's all.
Could, could I get your name, please?
Mary Tabbert. Mary Tabbert.
Mary Tabbert. Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments? Online?
There are no hands raised online.
Thank you. I'm open for entertaining a continuance for item number 15.
We, we actually don't need any sort of action, Mayor. We're just gonna not take action now. We're gonna put it on the agenda for the fourth. It's not a public hearing or anything, so we don't have to, we don't have to continue it. So we're gonna bring it back with all really good comments from, from the public and from council. So we're gonna bring back a much more enhanced version of the information that will explain what we're, what we're proposing out there. And look for that on your March fourth. Councilman?
If I can add, based on the last comment, if there's a way to break out the, the construction bid, how much for the pavilion, how much for plantings, how much, et cetera, et cetera, because that helps to explain, you know, where all that money went to.
Agreed. And just for, yeah, I agree. We're gonna bring in the entire bid list back, itemized by contractor by item, explanation of what the items are. The, the grant is included in that number, so it's not on top of it, just for clarification.
And and pictures for David.
We're gonna have pictures. We're gonna have plant list. If I can talk the landscape architect into coming, we're gonna have the landscape architect here to explain it. And we'll have the bid list.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. I know you do. I know you do. Thank you, Mr. Holly. Next business item is item number 16, Community Service Award Selection Policy. Mr. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a council requested item from your meeting two weeks ago. Back in 2020, a subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Oro worked through some modifications to our Community Service Award Selection Policy, and the council approved that in February. And there are now some proposed changes to that policy that show up in Attachment Three, I believe, is the red line, which is page 107 of your, of your packet. And so the council at your last meeting requested this future agenda item, and it's here for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Any questions from council?
Well, I, not so much a question, but just to recognize that on behalf of the Gateway Award winners, some of whom are in the audience, this is an exercise that we went through last summer and fall, solicited a lot of feedback from the Gateway Award winners, took the original draft, kind of redlined it, mostly added back elements that had always been there, but just didn't make it in the original draft. We did keep that voting relationship in which the council is, is part of that vote and continued the option that you can't vote twice. And and so other than that, I think most of it reflects the way it had always been. And specifically, that would mean that a Gateway Award winner would have to be a resident of American Canyon and that their service truly was voluntary. But the fact that there's a community achievement award is kind of the failsafe because there's always been that conflict of people who have been outstanding but for the fact that they live in Balaio or but for the fact that they get paid for it. And so the community achievement award is, is the mechanism by which the Gateway Award winners can acknowledge somebody who is thoroughly and, you know, legitimately should be recognized, but doesn't meet the criteria. And rather than change the criteria, we thought it made more sense to just provide that new type of award. And and people have been awarded and may even continue to be awarded. Other than that, you know, like I said, I think it's a little more comprehensive. It, it confirms the volunteer recognition ball. It acknowledges the organizational award winners that each organization can, can nominate that they do, however internally. And so in that respect, I think it is simply a more complete definition of the policy. And and I think it's a swell idea, and I would certainly be in favor of approving it.
Okay, Mr. Holly, I was under the impression that, are we trying to make an amendment to the old 2020 dash 26? Amendment, are we amending that, that policy with the updates? Because I'm thinking that we, we went through the whole process, and we actually had a selection process that also went, that we just completed prior to this being adopted, right? For the, the last gateway.
Yeah, I think the last couple of years, we've made some adjustments on the fly, and this is really trying to quantify that. Is my take on it, but I'm not.
What I understood, Council, Mayor, what I understood council's direction at your meeting two weeks ago was, at the request of Councilmember Joseph, was to take this policy that he had sent me earlier in the day and to bring it forward for your consideration. And so what I've done to to honor that was, we drafted a resolution that essentially replaced what exists now with the thing that was sent to me that day. So it's a repeal and replace for, for a short answer. It's taking what exists, repealing that, replacing it entirely. And there's a, a clean version, I believe, in your packet. There should, there should be a clean version in the packet. Yeah, sorry, it's Exhibit A to the resolution. So it's a repeal and replace what exists with the clean version in Exhibit A. We just showed the red line just for understanding of what exists and what will be changed.
So I guess my question is, are we trying to adjust it to, because we already started a process for this current gateway, correct?
Correct.
Is this to move forward after this, this last selection that we just did? Or is this, are we going to go back to another selection process for the current gateway?
This is 100% up to what the council wants to do. We, staff began soliciting nominations earlier in January. We've received nominations already. The nomination period closes, I believe, in mid-March. I'm not 100% sure on that.
Right. And that's, that's my point, Mr. Holly, is that there are people who have been nominated that may not fit the criteria any longer because they were nominated.
So staff has looked at the nominations that we've received to date. We've received eight, sorry, we've received 10 nominations as of last Thursday. And seven to eight of those would not be eligible for the award under the proposed program, correct?
And that's what I wanted everybody to understand. That's, that's the dilemma right now. But I'll open up for the rest of the council for a comment. Vice Mayor?
If I can make one more comment, there is a very practical way of addressing the issue. If, for example, we were to say this is effective for the next cycle, the practical solution is most of the Gateway Award winners are pretty much of a mind that says you have to be a resident, you have to be a volunteer. So you could arguably have a lot of people who don't meet that standard, frankly, as there were last year. And the simple reality is the bulk of the voters are the Gateway Award winners plus four council members. And so frankly, you know, you're not likely to get a Gateway Award winner that isn't a resident of American Canyon whose service has been exclusively volunteer. So as much as it'd be nice if we had done this four months ago, and it's as much my fault as anyone else that we didn't get it queued up in time, as a practical matter, it could be officially effective next year. And the same thing that happened last year will happen this year. The odds are the Gateway Award winners will vote for someone who does meet these standards, whoever that might be, versus somebody who doesn't. I don't know if that sounds cynical or not, but it's just a practical, you know, when you count votes, you, you similar to counting to three, only here you have 20 or something. So I think it'll work itself out, even if we made it effective, you know, for next year.
Gotcha, gotcha. I just want to make sure that we don't hurt any feelings.
There might be, but we'll work on that. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I'm generally fine with it, and I like the robustness. I've got a couple of questions. I think, you know, in section one on service order categories and eligibility, some of the eligibility stuff in section two should be in section one. And I'm looking at the youth. If you look at the Gateway Award, we have one, two, 1 dot 1, 1 dot 2, 1 dot 3, and 4, and all the qualifications of what makes them eligible. For Youth of the Year, we don't really have what makes them eligible. I mean, imagine to be a youth. But are they have to be American Canyon residents as well? I don't, do we want to call that out? Because I see that we also have one for, in, in the third section says, the nomination process for Youth of the Year will be similar to the Gateway Award process, except the local high school principal will be invited to nominate up to five students based on input from teachers and school staff. I know there's a lot of inter-district transfers coming through here. Do we want to call it that they're American Canyon student? Or, you know, I, I, that's a question that we have. Do we have that clarity? Because the reason why we were bringing this policy up is because we didn't have clarity before. And if we're going to make this clear, we should do it clearly here.
To that point, I would ask, I don't understand, I guess I don't understand why the high school principal would have a part in that. I think this, if the high school had something they were trying to promote for a Student of the Year, let the high school do that. Let the school district do that, right? If we're going to say that we want to nominate a Youth of the Year for a Gateway Award-type position, that should be something that that student has done in the community.
Yeah, the community has done. And it should be community-led, right?
Exactly.
Because I, you know, I don't spend much, too much time at the high school, although I was there this past weekend for their play. I see a lot of students out here doing service work all the time for our community, and they're very active and do a lot of things. I would like to nominate them because they're in the community. So I agree with you on the high school one. But back to my point on, I don't know what the criteria is on these. Same for organizational. So I think it still needs a little work in terms of just clarity, but overall, I'm generally fine with it. And then the last one was around the, the community recognition ball. Yes, let's do it. And that we will host an annual volunteer fair every year. I don't know who's going to hold our feet to the fire to that. And I'm only going to bring this up because I know there was a time when there was austerity measures and nobody wanted to like, you know, we, budgets were cut and stuff like that. I just don't want to be held to the fire by the community to say, you know, if there's something that we can cut, maybe it's one of these things that we're, the city's not paying for. I don't know if that's set in stone here that we have to do it. Yes, we should do it, but I don't know if there's an option to take that out, not have it if we don't have to do it.
Just real quickly on that last point, Councilmember Oro, what, what I would say is this is a city policy adopted by the city council and as is the budget that you adopt each May. And so to the extent we were in a situation where our budget was more austere and we were looking at things we were not able to do, your action to approve a budget, we would get explicit about that? Excuse me, we get explicit about that, saying, in this particular budget, we're not going to implement this particular part of that policy. We're not going to be implementing that. And so there's a, there's a way to have that budget process kind of supersede what is a, a policy here. So that's probably not as big of a, bit of an issue that you can handle on a, on a one-off basis.
Yeah, I, I would agree that the language says that the use of city funds is authorized, which simply says it's okay to spend money on this. But if we're in the middle of a recession, you know, council probably won't. So I think the, the intent was just to say, hey, there's some authority to do this so that somewhere down the road, you don't just say, hey, why is the city subsidizing some of this cost? Well, because our policy says it's okay. On the, the guidelines and the outreach, when I was discussing this with the city manager, he made the same point. And, and I would suggest that we, we just kind of fixated on, gee, we don't know a lot of young people. don't know a lot of young people, who would? Well, high school principals should, or high school teachers should. But, you know, the reality is, that's kind of how you would promote it and solicit names. It may make more sense to talk about that under Section Three, Notification and Outreach, and modify it to point out, you know, in an effort to get a Youth of the Year, we would certainly reach out to Boy Scouts, to Little League, to a variety of organizations that serve youth, because they're the ones who are best inclined. So, I do think that language needs to be tweaked, because it's way too specific and, frankly, in the wrong spot. So, you know, I think there's a fair argument that a little bit of final editing is appropriate, and like I said, I think this should be made for the next cycle. So, I don't think it's as urgent to get it adopted tonight as much as it is to get it cleaned up and finished conceivably March 4th on consent, if everyone's okay, except for a couple of things, and they're addressed.
Yeah, I think we would also add, and there's a number of youth that go to private schools or schools outside of the district. So, giving it to the principal and eliminating those who go to private school wouldn't be fair as well.
It also begs the question of a middle schooler who's done an outstanding job. So, that one, that one needs a little work.
I agree.
I can't speak on behalf of everybody, but.
We did have one sort of clarification around the Youth Commissioners. That's a program we started a little more recently, which right now it's available to high school seniors. And in the past, what we've done is we've recognized them. It's not necessarily like an award, per se, we provide them that recognition. As we evaluate Youth Commissioners' applications, we don't evaluate their residency. We don't, they don't have to be an American Canyon resident to be a Youth Commissioner. It's a non-voting member of our commissions, it's non-paid, it's definitely a volunteer-type activity. So, we'd want to just sort of clarify, whatever attributes are ascribed to these various awardees don't necessarily apply to the Youth Commissioner, because we aren't using that same standard. We aren't saying you have to be an American Canyon resident to be a Youth Commissioner, because we're not providing that sort of value proposition.
That's a good point. If there's no more questions from the council, I'd like to open up the public comment on item number 16.
Mayor Washington, I did receive, or a council received, a written comment from Pastor Morris Curry. I have no comment cards and no hands raised online at this time.
Okay.
I do.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a subject that I am very invested in. I would like to just give a little brief history of how this got started, so that people understand what this award is about. In its early days of cityhood, the city council decided that they would honor the volunteers that make our community what it is. At that time, the council thought, and still believe, or at that time, still believed, that American Canyon was the gateway to the Napa Valley. And so, the Gateway Award was given to somebody who had outstanding volunteerism in the community and made it a better community. And henceforth, all those winners were called Gators, not Gay A T O R S, but Gay A T E R S, not to be confused. So, it was, at that time, one of the most unique things that our city did. It put us on the map as a community that really cared about the people that were making the community what it was, and still is. So, the Gateway Award is very, very important, because it shows that the city itself honors those people who actually make the city. I do say that, you know, bricks and mortar is important, services at the city, you know, provides for us sewer, water, blah, blah, public works, all very good, but the community is the people. And this is what we're trying to continue to honor, is the people who live here. If you want to consider still being, and I think we all will, that American Canyon is a great place to live, work, and play, but it's the volunteers here who continue to make that possible. It's not the brick and mortar, and that's why it's so important to have this Gateway Award.
She's giving her by time.
Thank you, Fran. I am concerned that this last latest application went out with the idea that you do not have to be a resident of the City of American Canyon to get the Gateway Award winner, to be a Gateway Award winner. That was never the intent of, or the practice of the Gateway Award process. So, before it could come before you, I guess a couple of weeks, the applications went out, which I think was a mistake, because I believe it's misleading the public, and I don't think you really want to do that. But it did go out. And I also have a problem with the process, because if you're relying, and it seems like you are, you did it last year, and it seems like it's this year, that you're relying solely on people clicking onto the American Canyon City website. Not everybody does that. People who volunteer always, they don't always do that, they probably don't do that. So, you're not reaching the real bulk of the people who volunteer. The other thing I want to say about the cost, because I know there is a cost, we filled up the gym years with people paying for their own dinner, not complaining about it, happy. True that we didn't need to make it such a big ball, it doesn't have to be that, but it is important to honor the people who are here. And I have to tell you, one of the first meetings we had last year with the city manager, and Jason, I'll just tell you, my jaw dropped, because when we had this meeting about volunteers and why we want to do this, Jason said, well, why would we do that? Why would we honor these volunteers? I was stunned by that response, and I think it's because he doesn't have the history of the city, and he doesn't have the history of the Gateway Award and other awards. The other thing that I want to say is that the thing that the city council in 2020 passed was ambiguous, it wasn't really all that clear in some areas. So, what has come up with what Mark put together with the input from any of the Gators is pretty accurate and closes a lot of loopholes. So, I'm just asking that you go ahead and that you, I don't know, you want to tweak it or whatever, but it is a very, very important thing for American Canyon. It's not only history, it's tradition, and it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Mary, again, I stuck in everything she said, and I just want to also put in there that we seem to be losing tradition in American Canyon. I'd love to see this tradition stay. We are losing way too many traditions here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other public comments? Anything online?
I do. I have Janelle Selig. Go ahead, Janelle.
Hi, everyone. Janelle Selig again, and I think really interesting conversation, and as a person that has received an award and also nominated for awards, I think this is an important tradition for the city as well, and I also know that sometimes, as cities evolve and time moves on, you know, traditions can change and still be, still meet the needs of the people that have been involved, and also stay relevant. And so, I just wanted to throw out there that I've also been involved in a countywide awards, like a ceremony or annual awards tradition through the Center for Volunteer and Nonprofit Leadership. And I think if you're, you know, the group is looking for any kind of comparables, as far as criteria for awards, they have a really nice structure and format, makes it really easy to apply, really clean and clear as to what the awards are for and how they're given. So, just wanted to just kind of pipe up and say, you know, sometimes transitioning these things can be challenging, but I think it's a great tradition for the community, and there's our award ceremonies that are done and continue to be done well throughout the county, and I know through CDNL, that's been one that seems to stand out and kind of meet the needs of everyone, and again, just happy to have this tradition in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Janelle. Any other comments online?
No other hands raised online.
Thank you. Beth.
Good evening, Beth Marcus. I've been trying to gather my thoughts on some of this, because I've been involved in this for so many years, but if you think about it, if it wasn't for the volunteers, it's saving the city a lot of money, because we are here doing things out of the goodness of our heart. And speaking for myself, volunteering, I don't know what to tell you, volunteering to me is the best thing in the world. It makes you feel good, you're doing good for everybody. Get emotional about this.
It's okay.
But we've met, and we've come across a lot of the things that in the past, how it has happened. Joan, you did a great job of describing what we've done, but again, if it wasn't for our volunteers in so many different capacities throughout the years, whether it's through, during COVID, for instance, I mean, if people weren't volunteering to help to do things, we were shut down, and I just think that a lot of us, I must be getting old, it must be my name, because everybody kept calling my name tonight. Now, I'm not remembering everything I wanted to say, but there's so much I want to say about this. I just think it's very, very important that we do recognize the volunteers here, because we're the ones, or they're the ones, who do all the things for us, help the city. I mean, even in service organizations, if we didn't have people who volunteered to do things like crab feeds, where would we be? There would be nobody there to even help you serve the crab. I mean, it's just that simple. But with the youth, we had, we did discuss a lot about the youth. We thought, because this is an American Canyon award, I know, a lot of things were brought out tonight about, well, some kids volunteer here and they don't live here, and I never thought about that at all. I mean, that's a good point, but we do have a lot of youth that volunteer here, and they need to be recognized. And I think that's it. We're very, yes, we are very, very proud of our city, otherwise we wouldn't be volunteering. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
So, Nance Mattson, and the recognition balls have been amazing, and to hear what people have done and volunteered, and I'm really glad I was not involved in the conversations and wasn't able to participate, but I'm really glad we're looking at this again and kind of remapping what we're doing, and looking at things like kids who go to private schools or homeschooled. How do we capture them in the Youth Awards? So, I'm glad we're looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nance. Mayor, city council? Powell Hollums. I'm just going to give you some numbers. 2017, we had the first of many fires. We had over 800 volunteers sign up to help at the shelter. Fast forward to 2020, where COVID hit us, just the CERT group alone put in 22,000 hours of volunteer work. So, our volunteers are super important, and this, just this little, this little recognition is, you don't understand how much it, yeah, it means. Just. Thank you, Powell.
I think I had a minute left. Going back to CERT, it brought to mind when we were doing the PSPS, CERT team was going around to, we received notification of people who were homebound and couldn't get out, and our CERT team went out, and we went to all of those houses to make sure everybody was taken care of, they had oxygen, they had food, they had water, they had whatever it was. And if we, again, did volunteer for that, that's another thing that, you know, that the community did that people didn't know about, and I got to plug CERT, we really are truly volunteers, and we do a lot of suffered volunteers, and we train monthly, and we train quarterly, and we're here to support the city for disaster, whatever, that's just one thing. So, I think my time's up now. I'm done.
Thank you, Beth.
I have two minutes left from Fran. I would like to see the city do a better job of notifying the people in our community that the Gateway Award and other awards are up for application. The way we used to do it was, there was a paper application sent to all of the nonprofits, I believe of the churches and all of the other things like scouts and stuff like that. And that's how people learned about it. Going just through the city website, I don't think is capturing everyone that could be captured, so I'd like to see some improvement in that area.
Thank you, Joan. Seeing that there's no more public comment, I'm going to close public comment. But I'm going to also close it with making this one statement for everybody that's here and looking upon. I'm confident enough to say that you have a council that realizes and recognizes the importance of the volunteers of our community. You know, we've all played a role in some sort of way in volunteering our time, even behind a dais, for the most case. So, we hear you, and we see the importance of it, we understand it. For you to get up there, and some of you get pretty emotional up there, we see that emotion, and it's meaningful to all of us. So, you will see that we will support the Gateway Award, and we will fine-tune it to make sure that it's something that we put as a priority for our cities, but thank you. Returning to the council for any closing comments or recommendations?
Well, if it's all the same to the council and to staff, frankly, I, having worked on this enough, I think I can make the two or three tweaks, primarily in the area of outreach with youth, because I do think, frankly, we got that one wrong, and so we can make that a little better, and maybe just highlight how we can out, do a better job with outreach. But I'll submit some edits or red lines to the red lines and get it back to staff, so that we have it ready for the March 4th. And if it looks close enough, maybe it's a consent item. March 4th is starting to accumulate a fair number of extras, but, you know, it can either be business or consent, depending upon how close, you know, you think the language gets.
But I'd say, Vice Mayor Joseph, maybe give me a call in the next couple of days and talk through some of the changes. I've got some notes here, some edits, I think, too. I think we can spin this back together pretty quickly.
Yeah, sounds good. And Vice Mayor Joseph, I think I was part of that two-by-two committee, so please utilize me, I didn't see this until it showed up here.
That's true. If you want, I'll send you the file, and you can just finish it.
Yeah, I can finish it, and I want to echo the mayor's conversation. This isn't about taking away any volunteer recognition, it's about improving it and celebrating it, and we're just documenting it in a way that makes it better for every, for future generations, for sure.
Affirmative. Well, thank you, thank you all. Management and staff oral reports, Mr. Holly?
Yeah, in, in your packet is our fiscal year '24, '25 Q3 capital project schedule update, and Senior Civil Engineer Ron Renata can kind of share some of the hype points.
Hello, mayor. Council members, back before you once more to share with you, as Manager Holly said, the third quarter capital projects schedule and update. First off, just looking back on accomplishments for the previous or the past 90 days, construction, we completed one project, the new all-open space trailhead and parking lot improvements. I'm hoping to bring the notice of completion to you soon. We also awarded four, per your handout, four, not five, construction contracts, the City Hall roof repair, three ARPA projects, the Knights Bridge Water and Pavement, Pavement Improvements Project, the Melvin Road Project, and the Rancho del Mar Utility and Paving Improvements. We're going to push off Wetlands Edge Enhancement per your direction. We also completed design on the EV charging stations here at City Hall and also City Hall Roof Repair. We also awarded one design contract, the one that we're partnering with Napa County on, which is for the South Kelly and Highway 29 intersection improvements that include Tower Road for the county. With that, looking ahead for the next 90 days, we're hoping to have construction underway and actually do have construction underway on the projects that are listed below, with the exception of the Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project once more. There's already ongoing activity for both the Knights Bridge Project and the Rancho del Mar. You might see some activity with potholing and such. Melvin Road, we're hoping to start that sometime around April, when weather permits, because it's a storm drain improvement project. And then also, again, under construction for the roof repair here at City Hall and the EV charging stations. We're also hoping to design, or complete design, on the restrooms at Silver Oak Park and North Hampton Park, as well as the shade structure at North Hampton Park. And lastly, hoping to award a contract for Veterans Park Playground Improvement. And if we need to bring back more contacts for that one, we'll do that.
Great job, Rob.
And then as we've done in previous meetings, I believe, in your packet, we have the detailed schedule and a map for the projects.
Okay. Thank you. Any other oral reports, Mr. Holly?
Um, no. This time, nobody's allowed to talk at this time of night.
But you did a good job, Ron.
Thank you.
Filling in.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah. Moving on to our mayor, council comments and committee reports. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Can I pass and come back, or what's the deal when, at the nominations? We're going to, I'm going to let somebody else do it and catch me on the backside while I start scratching out some notes.
Okay.
Basically, I'm not organized.
You're not organized? Okay. Councilmember oral? You are looking at your newest Napa County local area formation, LAFCO Commissioner Alternate, that's me. I was sworn in on Tuesday, and I sat through my first meeting. And I'll, I'll tell you, LAFCO's pretty thick. Yeah, it's pretty dense. So a lot of municipal service stuff. Glad to be on it. I'm actually serving with somebody we saw tonight. Ken Leary is the Chair of LAFCO this year. So that's the big update. More stuff coming soon, and I'll keep you posted. We meet every even month, the first Monday of every even month. So next meeting isn't, what is that, April? Yeah, okay, yeah. Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Lamatina?
I attended my first commission meeting for climate, and Councilmember Joseph was there, and we had a professor from Berkeley come and talk about what we're doing to our planet. It doesn't look great. So any more to add there?
Only, only that we also approved the selection of our new chair and vice chair, which is Joel Gallagher, I think, is the new chair, and Kevin Eisenberg, Councilmember from Calistoga, is the vice chair. So that was good news. And, and yes, the professor, more or less, it was discouraging, because his, one of his points that he made was, he, he doesn't waste time with modeling and hypotheticals. He relies entirely on, this is what, you know, the last 500 years has been. So the, it, it just makes it all the more darning, damning that things are getting bad and we need to do more, not less.
But there's hope. There's hope.
Yeah, I forget the part about the hope, but yes, in time, everything will fix itself.
Is that it? Councilmember Cruz?
It was a very productive night. I just want to announce that ACHS is decathlon, academic decathletes, did really, really well on Saturday, and just want to congratulate them on their efforts. I think they're still competing, so well done, American Canyon High School. That's all.
Nice. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Well, primarily, I was going to talk about the Climate Action Committee, and I couldn't immediately remember it. So I do appreciate Councilmember Lamatina bringing out the highlights. But I, I will mention two other things. There is a crab feed, and there are tickets available, so don't lose hope. And secondly, next, what, February 15th at Doubletree, the Third Annual American Canyon High School Art and Music Festival will happen that the Art Foundation works on providing. So there's going to be artwork, there'll be some appetizers, it'll be fun. There's apparently going to be some cyber trucks on display unrelated to the art program, but that's there. So we encourage you, buy your tickets for the crab feed, March 1, hang out at Doubletree on February 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only thing I have to report on for the mayor is myself and Councilmember Cruz, we attended the new mayor, new city council member, Cal City's training. It was a three-day course. We learned a lot there, and we plan on bringing that to the, to the dais, to, to be better mayors and better city council members. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Any future agenda items?
I, I have two. One, can we do something about the microphones? I don't know what it is. I thought it was just that one was screwed up, but apparently there's something. So if there's some way that we can either muffle it or figure out how to use words that don't include the P sound, so that would be my first request. And then not as, not as urgent, can we get a report on what, if anything, we have been doing or could be doing to have like a native plant drought-resistant landscape ordinance or something? Basically, you know, what could we be doing to kind of shepherd our landscaping plans to be more native plant and drought-resistant? And what are the consequences and all that? To get that ball rolling, because I do think it's a worthwhile issue to look at, and the first step is just getting some general information and, and an analysis. So if we could put that on the list of things to do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? CNN, we have concluded our business for this evening. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.
Good night.